Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the regular Board of Selectmen meeting for August 4th, 2025 to order. It is 5:30 PM. In attendance, we have First Selectwoman Jude Reed, I mean Selectwoman Jude Reed, Selectman Jim Lampos, and First Selectwoman Martha Schumaker. We also have various residents in the town meeting hall. We have some reporters from the CT Examiner and Limeline, and we have members of the public online as well. And everyone has muted themselves, and I appreciate that. Okay, so we'll start with information items, communications, and correspondence. I'm going to start with the fact that at our last meeting, we talked about the offer. I'm sorry, our mics aren't working, but we're going to talk as loud as we can for the audience. We talked about being offered a sculpture from Gil Burrows. Unfortunately, that was the family decided that it would go to the synagogue in Chester who offered to take it. But we are on the list that if anything ever gets rehomed, that we will have the opportunity to reclaim. I appreciate the fact. Let's see, my correspondence, I received emails from Mary Daly and Paula Malillo about the article from the CT Examiner in 2022 regarding that 4.1 million. I heard from Bill Rendazzo from concerns about some WPCA behavior at their meetings. I heard from Donna Mizelli about an article on the sewer vote that wasn't really supposed to be taking place last time. We were just going over the timeline last time. We did not plan to take a vote last time at all. So that was incorrectly notified in the CTX Examiner article. We had some two notifications about some long-term parking that's happening down at Hartford Avenue, which the police department is checking out. We have moved our Board of Finance meeting to August 12th instead of August 19th. We're very proud of the Old Lime Fire Department for getting another grant, which will be used for chainsaws and some other materials that they need for their work. And I do also want to give, go on to other things that I have. One message from Judith Archer about the fireworks and the smoky residue in the area near Library Lane and her concerns. We also had some offensive graffiti on a sign on the Connecticut River Bridge project on Shore Road. We did go to look for it. We could not find it. I am not, Suzanne Lloyd sent this to me. If she still sees it, please let me know because we had three people look for it and could not locate it. We also had a very nice letter from Stephen Algood regarding what a wonderful job the Old Lime Fire Department did responding to a fire at their house and how pleased he was with their service. We had a visiting family talk about their concerns with Soundview and some of the things that they witnessed on the beach that they were concerned about that was forwarded to Matt Weber and the police department. And then I have a number of correspondences that were to be read in. And one, I know it's just Paula Malillo has asked that we add public comment to the end of the meeting as well after they hear the presentation on the WPCA. I've heard from, and I know Jude and Jim, you both heard from Steve Ross as well with his letter concerning DEEP and this WPCA project. I heard from Brian Cornell also regarding the answers that he needs to make a decision on these sewers and some of the information that he thinks is missing. And I did hear from Frank Papalardo, who asked that his public comment be read into the record, which I will do during public comment. Also Jude, I know that you had asked last time for the expenses that we spent with Mr. Sweeney. So these are all the expenses from that Mr. Sweeney occurred for the Halls Road overlay project. Basically, it was a total of $41,802. $31,480 was spent during the past administration and $10,321 has been sent since I took office. And that's the total cost for that. There, I know you also asked for all of the Hall Road expenses. That's taking a little bit more time because it's going back quite some time. So we are continuing to work on that. Just give us more time, we'll get it. I also know that you have your floor responses because I know Elizabeth reported out on that. So those are two of the things that you asked for. You'll get more next time. Great, working on it. I do also want to give a shout out to Matt Lynch because he came in and worked with the diagrams for the ordinance. He went into town clerk's office and worked with Vicki to find the correct diagrams to go with the harbor management ordinance that we just recently passed. And that will go out for codification soon. Anything?
I've received a number of communications regarding LYNs and animal controls. Excellent work on rescuing 27 animals from a home down at the beach. I've received numerous inquiries as to did we have any police department coverage last night when there was an early evening accident on McCurdy Road? And I said I did not know. And people are curious that if if we did not have coverage on a Sunday evening, why not?
We had a state trooper. Please remember that when our, when our police officers are on, if they're on another call, state troopers take over. I'm not sure who was on last night, but I will check on that.
And I know you acknowledged that I had made some requests. Someone else has also inquired about the expenses and the status on Chenomeg Land.
We, I would like to know who that person is. So can you forward that request to me?
Sure will.
Thank you.
It wasn't in writing, it was a phone call.
Okay. Okay, so Jim, do you have anything?
I also received along with Brian Cornell, Mr. Stephen Ross. Their correspondent Greg Fatoma sent us, I think we all received an article on e-bikes, which should be, should be on our radar, I think. Mr. Ross and Mr. Papalardo both requested their correspondence be read into the record.
We'll do that during public comment.
Okay. So that's what I have, thank you. And Mary Daly just sent me something just now.
Oh, also just so it was in my newsletter last week, but we did receive our members' equity distribution check from Kirma for $10,816 last week. And just so you know, the Emergency Operations Center, just a construction update. No unexpected expenses to date. They are in budget to date. 12% of the owner's contingency has been used. 5% of the builder's contingency has been used. At 50% work completion, this project is in great financial shape. They're currently preparing the reimbursement request to the state and anticipate the town to begin receiving them in the fall, depending on the speed of the state, of course. And we are the original fiscal year 2526 Millstone Special Project request of 120,000 from the state has been reduced to 40,000. And the reasoning for this is to have a spend, spread the remaining amount of our total request, $80,000 over the next two years. This is achievable on our end. We can postpone the purchase of some of the furniture items and fixtures and reuse some of the older items we have already in place. That is from the committee. Okay. So public, we're moving on to public comment at this time. If we want, do we want to withhold public comment to the end? Do we want to start and then have it again? What is your preference?
I think it's up to the audience.
Well. How many in the audience would like to have public comment twice?
I would.
All right. We will start with we've got it. We're gonna, we'll do it twice. So we're going to amend the agenda to include public comment again after. I would suggest we do it after new business. So can I have a motion to add an additional public comment after new business?
I'll make a motion to add a second public comment between new business and old business on today's agenda.
I will second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor of adding an additional public comment under, after new business, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? None? And anyone abstaining? None. Okay, passes. We will add public comment after new business. All right, so we're going to start with public comment number one. So is there anyone in the audience who would like to offer public comment at this time?
Yes, I'd like to offer public comment.
Oh, can you wait? We're going to do in, in the room first and then we'll go to online. Thank you. Is there anyone in the room who wants to offer public comment at this time? Please come forward. You can have a seat at the table and then if, okay. I'm just gonna, it's close to you so it'll get on the recording.
Frank Tedi, 29, Smart Avenue.
How do you spell your last name?
T E T I.
Go ahead, Mr. Ten.
I'd like to know what's going on with the sewers here. And I brought up last year that at a meeting that since the whole town had a vote on this referendum, that it appears, and what I'm hearing is that each beach association has to pay for the sewers, including Soundview. Why should I, as a taxpayer, when the whole town voted on this referendum, I think the town should pay for it, not each individual beach association or Soundview where I live? Especially Soundview, since we, you, you guys, the town owns Soundview, I understand. So why should we be paying for these sewers? Infrastructure that you're planning on putting in here whenever it does get done. And I feel that since the whole town had a vote on this referendum, that should come out of our taxpayer money, not that each individual, that we have to pay for. So I never got an answer for that. The only answer I remember getting was the guy said, it's not going to happen. But so I'd like to get more information on now why it can't happen.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Mary?
Thank you. Chair wants to come with me. Mary Daly, nine Portland Avenue. First of all, I want to thank you for the beautiful monument in front of this building honoring our veterans, including my neighbor Dennis, my husband, many members of my family. I thank the town of Old Line for that recognition. It's much appreciated. Thank you. I understand that tonight on the selectance meeting agenda, there is, will be a presentation regarding the costs and dates for the sewer project. And I expect that there are changes since the last presentation. But as a member of the Old Lime WPCA, although I have asked, I have, I have been denied an opportunity to review or weigh in on what will be presented tonight. I ask, I expect it will be a strong suggestion to move forward on this project toward town meetings and a referendum before we even know what the Miami Beach or Old Line Shores bids results will be. Miami bid, beach bids, by the way, the opening got pushed back today to August 19th. We just got a notice on that. As a member of the Old Line WPCA, I have requested copies of the working revised CSA, a spreadsheet of what Old Colony has spent and is projecting to spend for Soundview Area B that will be responsible for, of a copy of the forgivable loan and for an accounting of the 4.1 million that the WPCA publicly announced they had spent on the project in 2022. I've received none of those documents. As a member of the Old Lime WPCA, after much time and review, I strongly recommend that the WPCA step back, read the care and report that they commissioned before voting and approving a faulty EDU equation. It will not hold up in court. And you must agree, it's quite a stretch to stress a bus stop just so that you can reach a total of 270 EDUs. The WPCA voted to approve it anyway. As a member of the Old Lime WPCA, I spent considerable time last month reviewing the sewer ordinance and bringing to the table several concerns and suggestions, only to be told that the ordinance had been voted on in 2022, although I have not been able to find a record of that vote anywhere. All of my concerns and suggestions regarding the proposed ordinance seem to be ignored. In fact, there was a suggestion that I wrap it up quickly. I did not volunteer to be on the WPC or board, excuse me, to rubber stamp documents that will change the history of this town. This has to change. We need strong leadership that listens and works with the team, not in solitude. This has to change in order for this or any project to be successful. You've already addressed my other concern, which was to hold a second of public comment after the presentation. So I thank you very much for that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to offer public comment? Okay. Dennis?
Dennis Maluso, seven Portland Avenue. I echo Mary's comment about the WPCA. We're, we are on an island of our own, Mary and I. The meetings are a rubber stamp. Plain and simple, cut and dry. As you can tell, there's only two people from the WPCA without, plus the chairman here. This is a town project. It's not a Soundview project. This is a town project. And I think we, we have to watch how the votes go will mean how we present it. We have been complaining and complaining and complaining and nothing's been done. The only thing we get to do is to just put up our defense, even though everything that we've been asked to do, we've done with no consequence on the other side. Someone has to look at the makeup and the decisions of the WPCA regarding this project. And I am in favor of not having the referendum until we get all the financials in place so that we know what we're responsible for and what the rest of the town is responsible for. There has been a mention by a president of Old Lime Shores that he has grave problems with the way the CSA has been written, drafted, and voted on to be presented to us. And that's pretty sad because he was one of the, or the Old Lime Shores was one of consenting partners. So if he has reservations, then I definitely have reservations. It's not right. It's not right. And I suggest we, we do not go to referendum until we get all the answers answered and then go to referendum. Any questions? Nope, thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen, did you want to speak?
Kathleen Tracy, 76 Hartford Avenue. I'll be brief. I also am not in favor of a referendum at this time. I'm deeply troubled by all the things that I'm hearing about the WPCA and the way they're doing business. I don't think it's transparent. I don't think this is indicative of how our town runs and how U.S. councilmen and women work. I don't know who is the oversight of this group, but I think someone should. And yeah, it's a big subject. And I know someone spoke about, you know, why are we getting sewers and why are we the only ones paying? I mean, it's very complex. But even in its complexity, it should be transparent. And I don't believe that it is. We don't have all the facts. How can we go out to referendum? We don't really know what it is we have to pay. There's just so many holes. And I hope that we can slow it down. I know it's been 10 years, 20 years. I mean, it's, it's like, when I say slow it down, but what we're involved in right now to me is just not right. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the meeting hall who would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing no one in the meeting hall, I'll go to online. Is there anyone who is online who would like to offer public comment?
I would. I'd like to offer a public comment.
Okay, so you, can you please identify yourself?
My name is Daniel Tricarico. I live on 41 Hartford Avenue.
Can you spell your last name, Daniel?
T R I C A R I C O.
Okay, and it's what number Hartford again?
Four one.
Four one, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so it's apparent from the it's apparent that the head of the WPCA presently and the past head of the WPCA have been intentionally opaque in the communication with the residents and taxpayers of Old Line. Questions at meetings have been repeatedly ignored. And this has led to multiple Freedom of Information requests, which I understand has also been ignored. At the last meeting, I stated that the head of the Old Lime WPCA stepped down and a new head be appointed by the selectman. And I'd like to repeat that. He should step down and have a real representative of this community, of all the people, of all the taxpayers, come in and head the WPCA and not try to ramrod specific proposals that help specific individuals and hurt the vast majority of the taxpayers in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn, did you want to say something?
Yes, I would. Carolyn Miranda Tubus Kane Boulevard. I'd like to ditto everything everyone has already said. And I think it just keeps, need to be repeating until everybody understands that we're the people, we on the beaches are going to be paying all these crazy monies for sewers if it goes through. And that's why we need this accurate information. People that aren't paying for it, maybe, maybe you're not all, no matter who you are in town, you don't understand. You know, there's a lot of retired people down here. When you turn 65, you retire and you come down here to your beach house. You don't want to have to be taking on loans at any, any rate or big, huge expenses. So what I'd also like to say is, I'm still wondering if alternatives to sewers have been thoroughly explored according to a couple of people I heard on WPCA. They've not. Again, the need for complete, accurate, truthful, transparent facts and figures, dollar amounts. We found out about, I think, four meetings ago, maybe. Finally, we found out that there's no consent decree for Old Line, and that was very interesting.
Could you repeat that? Carolyn, could you repeat what you just said? There was what?
There was, I would say probably about four, four months ago, a meeting when the, the chair of the, the WPCA said, he admitted that there was no consent decree in Old Line. I thought that very interesting because that's what we've all thought for years. Something else that I don't hear much about, and I may have missed it, but I don't think so, the cost for us, family, each property to decommission the septic system. And if we have to decommission a well because of the sewers, I don't think we've heard very much about that. And I don't know. I, I'm, I'm really disgusted in general that this is not a town-wide infrastructure project that the entire town voted not to support this. It's absolutely outrageous. I want to know what's going to happen perhaps when Rogers Lake, you know, when somebody says they've got to have sewers. Is the same thing going to happen? They're going to be left on their own like we in the private beach associations are? I'll bet you not. I'll bet you top dollar not. Anyway, I appreciate all the efforts of everybody that's doing things. I especially appreciate the three select people for keeping on top of this and demanding accurate information, no hidden garbage. We're really tired of listening to the head of WPCA giving us all this trash all these years and half of it's not true, half of it's missing. I mean, it's just too outrageous to imagine. He does need to step down or you do need to appoint someone new. Thank you for listening.
Carolyn, I just have a quick question. You are a member of the Miami Beach Association, and I just wondered if the Miami Beach Association has put a presentation together for their residents?
I think Scott's on the line. You'll have to ask him.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to take Andrea Lombard, you have your hand up, so I'm going to let you speak next.
Hi, everyone. I'm Andrea Lombard, eight Heartland Place. I'm also attending, Dennis mentioned that other WPCA members are not present. I am on that committee or commission. And this has been a very complex, long project. And we are under administrative order from DEEP, which is different than other decree. But we do have an administrative order. For many years, we explored alternative systems and they were not accepted by DEEP. I, I do ask people to plow through a very densely packed website. We have a lot of information on the website. It is complicated. The process is complicated. And I will speak for myself and anyone that I know on the committee. We do try very hard to be transparent. And so please, you know, we would encourage you to email the WPCA chair any question that you have. Because what happens is they'll get a response and then we'll get a better understanding of what the questions are. There's an echo. I do to support even his role. He's done a lot of very positive collaborating and I, it is a very difficult role. And I want to appreciate the knowledge, unique position you have. We totally understand that you are, I mean, there's clearly I don't know. There's a lot of anger, tension. And, and that's been received. We're trying very hard to work through what we can. But we can't always owe to what you're accomplishing as far as, we don't have the power to say no, something that we've been, we've been along. Because our primary goal was sewer avoidance. But we were where you are maybe 10 years ago. We welcome all comments. And as you'll see with the presentation, if you look at all the different associations, sound who is actually going to be leasing my house. So I think Steve might like that today. Please email us. We want to be 100% transparent.
Okay, is there anyone else online that would like to comment? Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Bill Randazzo.
Go ahead, Bill. Can, address, please?
Pardon me?
Provide your address on Hartford.
52 and 56 Hartford Avenue.
Thank you.
What I'd like to just reiterate is, is Mr. Maluzzo and Daly. I do appreciate, I agree with them on that. I, I see one big problem. Anybody's address issue. And that's the problem is you've got multiple WPAs. Right, and all their bids are coming from top. Some of their bids are, are getting drawn or expiring. So every time we process here, we have to go back and find out again what the cost of O-line shores or old town. And try to take the numbers and put those all together. Our numbers that are communicable with all the organizations. And we don't have those numbers. Miami has no business, right? Old town, I mean, O-line shores have not yet, right? So I'm not sure how, but with any kind of numbers that are, make sense. Until we have everything on paper. And I, I don't know if there's someone in any organization here. Hey, look, we've got four or five beach associations that are all bidding at different times. All getting different whatever. And we're trying to come up with numbers. It can't be done. It, it's impossible. And if you want to send out to, um, a, a town referendum with, with, we don't have a clue of what certain numbers are going to pick. So all, all I'm recommending to actually be more of a skeptical organization that says, look, we've got all these organizations together. Bids got to come in same time, right? And we have to truly understand what the numbers are. And until we know that, you can't go to referendum. I mean, forget about what I feel like I pay for more than what they're paying for. There's nothing. But besides that, that's how I feel.
Thank you, Bill. Is there anyone else online who would like to offer public comment? Okay, I don't see anyone else. I do ask that all of you, please, online, would you please mute yourselves? So we appreciate it. Thank you very much. We will be offering public a comment again after new business. And we will get through it as quickly as possible. Okay, so the next thing is approval of minutes. We postponed our July 7th approval of minutes the last time so that people could have more time to review. I know it was hefty. Mr. Lampos, you were kind enough to send notes of all your changes so that we can provide those to our, our clerk today to say, so I did save those. And you have your, do you have gems?
Yes.
Yes. Do you have any more, Jude, that you want to mention?
Yes, because we didn't go over it at the last two meetings ago.
Yeah, one meeting ago.
Selectment's general discussion, number nine. Second paragraph reads, "Selectwoman Reed would like the Board Commissioning Committee updates to continue, and she would like the Board of Finance and Animal Control to present." What I did, I did not say Board of Finance. I said, "I would like to have the Finance Department."
Ah, okay.
And the HR Department, please visit and present, and Animal Control.
Okay. Anything else?
Not at this time.
Okay, so Jim sent us a list of all of his public comment corrections. I can provide those to you. And Jen, I'll give this to you. So you've seen them.
I printed it out.
Right, so with those changes, can we approve the minutes of July 7th? The regular meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 7th.
I will second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the regular meeting minutes of the July 7th Board of Selectmen meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None? Anyone abstaining? We're good to go. Those minutes passed with the recommended changes. Then we have the minutes for July 21st. Is there anyone there? Any changes to those minutes? I know that you both weighed in on the draft, first draft that was sent to us. So I don't know if there's anything else that you see that was not taken care of.
I have not looked at the latest update on these. I'm assuming that everything was, all the changes were made.
We have some spelling issues.
Right. I marked those in my comments.
Roger Torrey Pedersen.
Flo Briz. Flo Briz.
Gil Burrow.
Michaela Pearson.
Paul Malillo.
Yes. And misplaced punctuation.
I think we also, I haven't had a chance to go through the entire thing, but it's a matter of how much granular detail do we want, understanding that it's minutes and it's not a transcript. With some of the public comment, I think the, the overall point of what was being made was kind of lost by it not being specified. So I think a sentence or two in addition would be good with some of the public comments. So people reading the minutes know what the discussion is. And specifically, I'm referring to Sebastian's comments, Mary Daly's comments.
I'd be in favor of taking a second look at the revised copy.
Okay.
Okay, so can we get a motion to move these for review, further review? And if you'd like, I can have Katie send us both, all three of us, the transcript?
That'd be great.
So I know Katie's online. So Katie, if you could make a note, send the transcript of the July 21st, 2025 minutes to the three select people. I would appreciate it. And then we'll do a review. Can I have a motion to move this to our August 18th meeting?
I'll make a motion to postpone this for review on August 18th.
I will second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes to move the minute review for July 21st to the August 18th minutes. Okay. And now we have a presentation. Mr. Tsunami, would you like to come forward, please? Now, before you begin, I would just like to say that this presentation is not supposed to be a final presentation. I asked Steve Tsunami to do a draft of a presentation that he would be making later in the month of August. And one of the reasons I asked for it to be drafted is they said that the selectmen were going to have some comments on it. I also suggested that Mr. Tsunami present this presentation to his WPCA, their comments and review at their next meeting in August to get feedback. So those things will be happening in the month of August. And then a final presentation would be made at an information section, session on 8/18, at which point in time the public can also ask questions and provide more information to what details they would need. So there, this isn't meant to be the final project, presentation. It is meant to be a draft of what he's got so far. And then we can provide more information, and you can, in your public comment later, provide us with questions that you would like to have answered.
I have one question. You said the next presentation, public presentation, would be 8/18. Is that at our selectmen meeting?
No, it is the evening. It is at the high school. If you have the time. I believe we decided to have it at 6:30. I will double check, 6:30 or 7:00?
So it'll be after our meeting?
Right.
Thank you.
We'll walk across the street.
Thank you.
Would it be possible for him to stand up so we could hear what he's saying?
Um, he needs to be, well, I can.
I'll try to do that.
You want to sit?
You need to share.
I'm pretty, pretty confident that everyone will be able to hear me. Martha, can you?
Jen can't even hear you, so, no.
Steve, maybe down here?
Yeah. Do you think you can get that screen to share? He said, well, I had to do this. She said it was guaranteed to work.
Just.
Try to get.
Maybe, oh, wait, yeah, share.
Microphone.
Up right hand corner.
That's it. I think that.
Got it?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah.
That's your screen?
That's my screen. Yeah, I want to share my screen.
Okay, so now you're going to share your presentations? Great.
All right, well, first off, thank you for inviting me to present again.
Oh, by the way.
From the comments I.
So you know, I made copies of you, so if you wanted to make notes as we go along.
From the comments, I hear it. I'm not communicating very well with the public because I think I have answered those lot of the questions. But hopefully, you know, I took some stuff from Jim Lampos's comments from the past several months. Some from Martha and some from Jude, and tried to address those as well as some of the other recurring questions that arise at our WPCA meetings. So this is a, a presentation on securing O-line's future. WPCA sewer system referendum proposed.
Steve, can you make it full screen?
That might be my full screen.
You got to go to, over to where it says.
Present.
New slide.
Yeah.
You should be able to.
That's going to give me.
Slide show. Slide show on the top.
Want to go to slideshow on the top, right after animation, up in the gray. Keep going to the right, right? Nope, to the right, Steve.
Right.
Yep, right there, slideshow, down, down, go down, right there. Slideshow.
I'll try it now, okay?
Be big.
Okay, go. Is it, can everyone see that? I can turn the screen a little bit. Can everyone see it?
Increase.
Turn the screen a little? The people in the back, I think, sometimes. I'm harder to chime in. Are you guys good with that?
I am, thank you.
The camera's on the audience, but that's okay.
We're good.
Okay, some of the things I'd like to accomplish in this presentation are why the sewer project matters, existing funding status, why an increase is necessary, the economic, environmental, and public health impact, and what $17.1 million will achieve. Benefits to the community. It protects groundwater in Long Island Sound. It will increase your property value. Enables homeowners to improve their property without worrying about septic system constraints. And it reduces a public health risk. Current system challenges. We have aging septic systems in the shoreline and neighborhoods. As a matter of fact, I believe two people are not allowed to live in their home right now in Soundview because their septic system has failed, and they have not within a new septic system. Environmental risks to Long Island Sound. The DEP believes that we are contributing to potential pollution in the sound. Rising groundwater contamination concerns. If the science is correct, the water table is going to continue to rise, which will allow less and less space between the bottom of your septic system and groundwater, which will just intermingle. And regulatory compliance requirements from DEEP. And that's a big one. We, we are not under a consent decree like, or consent order like the three beach associations. We're under administrative order that basically says, as long as we're making progress to install sewers, they will not issue a consent order. If we stop this process, we risk being under a consent order. And what they can do under a consent order is what they have basically done with O-line shores. They sat O-line shores down and said, this is the timeline in which you're going to have valid bids. And they had been ordered to bid that project out and have a contract award by October 10th. The original funding, which was developed back about 12 years ago, we, we were looking at $9.5 million. It went to referendum in 2019. It was passed. During that time, plans were being developed. COVID hit. There was hyperinflation after COVID had has increased costs in the sewer business by 40 to 60% of pre to post COVID levels. So we're asking for another 17, we're asking for another $7.6 billion to equal 17.1. But the state DEP feels that this is their number one concern in, in the state. They're offering us a, which has never been done before, not only a 25% grant, but a 25% forgivable loan to install the sewers. So basically, 50% of this system would be paid for by the state. Did you have questions?
Oh, we don't have questions now. We let him go through the whole thing. You're going to have public comment afterwards.
So I know that a lot of people seem to not trust my breakdown of costs. This is a document developed by Fussin O'Neill. It was sent to me today by Curve Mailman. And I'd like to bring your attention to Soundview Area B. He's broken it out. The shared forced main centralized pump station would be, would cost us $5.999 million. The internal sewers with the lowest bid alternate, that is, again, our lower bid, is $8,551,950. He has some short-term financing in there. He's got eligible engineering for upcoming. Uh, he has some short term financing in there. He's got, uh, eligible engineering, uh, for upcoming bids. Uh, there's a contingency. There's, uh. A, a lot of other stuff eligible CW funding costs of sixteen million, seven hundred seventy eight thousand. You take twenty five percent grant, twenty five percent, uh. Uh, maximum eligible forgiveness. And the cost or the amount being financed, I should say, is eight million, five hundred fifty four thousand dollars. That would be financed at two percent over, uh, twenty years. Um.
Martha, it's not available to all of us online?
Um, no, I, he said he just got it today. Um. Um, I would like it sent to us.
Sure.
So that we can see it a little easier.
Now this. I'm sure everyone's seen before.
So can I just have a question on that? You have given us, uh, a couple of copies of this? And the last one I received that I have is six sixteen. Has this been updated since then? Has this been updated since six sixteen?
Uh, what, what, what's the number? I, it may have, uh, been, been formatted somewhat differently.
Eight five.
Uh.
What's your final number? Eight five three two?
Eight five three two two oh two eight eight.
The last one I have was one oh two, so. That's by a thousand. Twenty eight, okay.
So. I've presented this, I guess, in June, um, and it, it differs a little from, from, uh, Kurtz. It's about, uh. Twenty thousand dollars different from Kirk elements. Uh. I have a feeling that's just in, in, uh, how we figured out, uh. Short term interest or, or one of these small items, but. I. Whatever number you pick, a, a, a twenty thousand dollar difference over eight million dollars is, is an extremely small percentage. Um, and so. I would have to say that this number that I've been presenting, while people may not agree with the data that's here. Um, at least it is backed up by an outside engineering group that has done. This many, many times and has come up to an extremely similar number. Um.
Steve, I think the bottom of your sheet is cut off. The yearly cost per EDU is not showing. Oh, there you go. Thank you.
So, uh. What we've done, and I've, I've, I've adjusted, I've adjusted to take out. Uh. A bus stop that is owned by the town of O'Line to equal two hundred and sixty nine EDUs. Um, when we, just, just for information, when we sat down and reviewing it, we, we didn't look at what the use of the property was. We looked at whether it could be buildable or not. And so a five thousand square foot lot, or I'm sorry, ten thousand square foot lot down in Soundview is potentially buildable. Especially if it has a sewer going across it. So any empty lot that was ten thousand square feet, we felt should, should contribute to the, uh. EDUs, uh, because they will most likely obtain a benefit from. They'll have a valid disposal system for sewers. They'll have probably Connecticut Water hooking them up. And so. It's pretty much a buildable lot. And so when we went through it, we didn't determine who owned it or what it was used for. We just assigned them based on that. Um, it's just a formula that we use to figure it out. Um, when I was informed that it was owned by the town and that it's a bus stop, uh, we decided to remove that. Um. So anyway, you take, you take the yearly payment of eight million, five hundred and thirty two thousand change. At two percent interest over twenty years. Uh. Compounded on a yearly basis divided by two hundred and sixty nine, you will get. One thousand, nine hundred thirty nine dollars and seventy six cents as an annual, uh. Payment per EDU. Um, for. Having sewer go through, having sewer go by your home and, uh, eliminating your septic system. So. What, what is it included in that EDU? A lot of people are focused on this. And I'm going to try to, to answer this the best I can. So there are connection charges to New London. That is basically. O'Line WPCA. Paying for infrastructure that New London has already spent money on. In which that they're going to now, we're going to own a portion of their capital because we're buying into their system. Um. We negotiated a contract in the London IMA, Interminable Agreement. Of seven hundred twelve thousand, eight hundred nineteen dollars and seventy one cents financed. At two point sixty five percent over twenty years. Um, that equals a hundred and sixty nine dollars and fifty three cents per year per EDU. Um, the same goes to, uh, for East Line. We have to connect through East Line, so we have to pay East Line a fee. That was negotiated at two hundred seventy two dollars, ten, two hundred seventy two thousand, ten dollars and forty nine cents. Over twenty years at two percent, that equals sixty one dollars and thirteen cents per EDU per year. The total connection charges per EDU per year is two hundred and thirty dollars and sixty six cents. So I've been asked, why? Are this, why are the, uh. Beach associations including that in their, in their, uh, assessment value and we're not. Um. They can. The beach associations, there are three different, well, there's basically four other WPCAs, including Pointa Woods. But those three beach associations have their own WPCAs. They have their own methods of figuring out. The, the EDU system. They have their own methods of assessment. They have their own methods of what they want to do. It would be nice and preferable if we could all agree on. How people are going to charge each other in the system, but how Old Colony charges their people does not affect us in any manner. On how we would charge ours. Um, there are so many other things that we've worked on that that is not on the top of the list. But I'll, I'll read from, uh, the state. Methods of capital cost recovery on water pollution control projects. What is a connection charge? A connection charge referenced in CSG seven dash two five five. May be levied at the time of connection with the sewer and is generally in addition to the benefit assessment. Connection charges take basically two forms. The first, which exists while the debt for the sewer system is still active, generally covers the municipal cost of processing your permit to connect. Including the inspection of the connection. The second, which usually occurs after the capital debt for the sewer has been paid off, covers both the permanent process and lump sum payments in lieu of a benefit assessment. In the latter case, the funds collected in lieu of the benefit assessment are available for use for any capital cost with an existing proposed municipal sewage system. So. They're recommending that. It, it's not CWF. You can't roll it into the assessment and, and. Uh, capitalize that at two percent over twenty years. CWF funding will not cover that cost. Um, it's a cost for twenty years, um, and then it goes away. Uh, I guess it's the same as the assessment. Assessment's charged at twenty percent. We could put it in the assessment. Um. Nothing would prevent us from putting in the assessment, but the same person is going to pay it, whether it's a user fee or assessment. So, uh, it's, it's not, it's not added. It's not added to, uh. Uh, it's not, that figure is not considered part of the affordability equation when DEP does it, so. If, if everyone thinks that you want to be consistent, we can add it into the assessment. It, we. We as a group had discussed that and decided that we were going to go with the state, uh. The state document here, try to follow as much as possible. Um, so. User fees per EDU. Jim has asked me to try to develop. How much a user fee is going to cost here? And I was going through and I was looking up online. Uh, how much the pumps run, how much electricity they do, but. I'm not going to give you a number. I, I, I have a, a good idea what the number will be, but as. You'll find out later when Rich Pendercat said in an article. Four point one million dollars has been spent. Now people are looking to audit that four point one million dollars to see where it was. And I've answered that question, but I'm going to answer it later here, a little more in detail. Um. I don't want to get stuck in a number where someone comes back and you said, well, you said the user fee was going to be this and it's this. I don't know how much dioxide we'll use. Bioxide is a function of, of how, is a function of flow. Need flow velocity, like how, how much goes through at a time. The more that goes through, the less you need. So, uh, our, our dioxide use in the summer may be, may be minimal. In the winter, it may be high. Um, it, it all depends. It has to be adjusted. It's not, it's not something that you just put a number on. I do know that Pointa Woods, i- if I doubled Pointa Woods, uh, cost. Um, it would cost about eighty thousand dollars for the whole system. Um.
No, no comment.
Uh, but let me go through this. Uh, so user fees will be comprised of all costs.
You make a lot larger?
Yes.
Yeah, go back to.
Yeah.
Slideshow.
Slideshow?
You gotta click on the slide, the word slideshow. You gotta. Go back to your gray box and slideshow, you gotta pick.
Yeah, right there, right?
Yeah, but you gotta click on it and then it's going to say from beginning over on the left hand, not from beginning, from current slide. I think it's the second one in on the light gray bar.
Thank you.
There. There you go.
There you go. So user fees will be comprised of all costs necessary to properly operate, maintain the system. And will be split between internal infrastructure, one hundred percent. And shared infrastructure, twenty nine point seven percent. Um. There are two components to this system, if you're not familiar with it. One is that all the gravity in Soundview and Area B will be a hundred percent owned by O'Line. WPCA, or O'Line, Town O'Line. Um, the shared infrastructure, which is from the pump station. Out into East Line is, is shared. It's owned by all four entities. Uh, we get a cost savings. We're only paying twenty nine point seven percent versus a hundred percent of that system. Uh, and so all of the costs, uh, involved in, in, uh. Properly operating, maintaining the shared infrastructure will be responsible for twenty nine point seven percent. Uh, after two years, that'll be adjusted to, uh, flow ratios. So that if we use twenty five percent versus, if our flow is twenty five percent of the total, we would be paying twenty five percent of the fees. Uh, and not, uh, twenty nine point seven.
So based on actual?
It'll be based on actual usage. Um, fees will include electricity, biocide purchase, land rental, taxes, grounds maintenance, annual inspections, insurance. Third party O M company and other incidentals. So, uh, basically all the other, uh, overhead costs associated with, with running and maintaining the system. Will, will be added and then, uh, entered into, uh. A formula, this formula, the entire, and we would pay twenty nine point seven percent of that. I would not expect. A- any, in the first year, there's no, there's no maintenance expense at all because it's all on the guarantee. But in a gravity system, there's almost no maintenance. It, it runs, I mean, the pipes break, but they're new pipes, so. Uh. The, the fees, the fees associated maintaining and operating, uh, uh, a system are really on the, on the, uh. Uh, mechanical side after, after the pumps, pump station and afterwards, uh, is where you. Require more, for the farm more maintenance or if not more maintenance, certainly more, uh, cost. So from the previous slide, uh, we had two hundred and thirty dollars and sixty six cents, which will be for the connection fees to East Line and New London. That's combined, that's per EDU. Uh, in the, I, New London IMA, there's another eighteen dollars and thirty four cents, which will be set aside for a maintenance fund. Um, that is a figure that's sixteen thousand, six hundred sixty seven dollars divided by two hundred and seventy. A three hundred gallon per day also user fees. So at three hundred gallons per day for twelve weeks. And a hundred and fifty gallons per day for forty weeks. New London usage fee would be a hundred and sixty eight dollars per year. East Line figures. Our fees out a little differently. They'll, they'll go off of, uh, the first year. They're going to go off our design flow versus, uh, their total flow. Uh, it breaks it down. Um, I have a document here that shows, uh, uh. How it's broken down, but at an estimated yearly flow of six hundred, uh, six million, four hundred ninety five thousand gallons for all of O'Line, not just. Soundview and Area B, but all O'Line. Anticipated, uh, usage cost would be twenty five thousand, six hundred fourteen dollars. O'Line WPCA is responsible for twenty nine point seven percent of that. Or seven thousand, six hundred seven dollars. Thirty six cents, uh, of that divided by two hundred and sixty nine. Actually, I believe this is divided by two hundred and seventy. I use that as a. Uh, benchmark for all these, I'm sorry, uh, is twenty eight point one eight dollars per year. O'Line WPCA will also be responsible for point six five three fourth percent, that's twenty nine point seven percent. Of two point two percent of the East Line, that the two point two percent represents. Our ratio of flow, our percent of flow in their whole system. So. It's a flow based calculation. Uh, they're using the design flow in the first year. So two point two percent, we're responsible for twenty nine point seven percent of that because we're part of the, uh, uh, four beach associations. And we're, we, we have in our IMA with New London, that we're responsible for point five percent of New London capital improvements. Um, this is going to equal twenty four point two dollars and eighteen point five one dollars respectively. Uh, for every one million dollars that's been spent. And that money, which is, which would most likely be financed over twenty years at two percent. So when. There are articles saying that New London could, uh, New London, East Line has requested New London to improve capacity. It will affect us. I mean, it will be, will be charged for that capital because we own some of that capital. But as you can see, I mean, this is like. Forty two dollars and seventy one cents per million that would be financed over twenty years. It, it. It's not. You know, if, if we're a hundred million, it would be, uh, four hundred, uh, four thousand and twenty dollars, uh, financed over twenty years. Um. It, it, it's, it's not a huge increase as, as you would, you would. Be led to believe. So the minimum expected user fees and, and I, I use minimum. Uh. Kind of loosely here because this is based on maximum flow. This isn't based on. Wh- what's happened in the past and I'll lead up to that, but the min, based on all these numbers here. The minimum expected user fees would be three hundred and eighty two dollars and fifty two cents a year. Now that excludes. Of the electricity, the biocide, uh, and a- all that other, uh, stuff that. I, I don't feel comfortable. I, I mean, I could put a number on it and I feel I'd be probably close, but I have nothing to really back that up, so I'm not going to put a number on that. I will point out that Pointa Woods spends five hundred and twenty dollars per year per EDU. Uh, we are probably as close to Pointa Woods as, as, as a system. They have four pump stations, we only have one, but, uh, as a system, they, they, they use biocide. We're going to be using biocide. So, a- and I've said this all along, I, I would expect the fee to be around five to six hundred dollars a year. I, I can't give you numbers I don't have. You don't not buy a house because you don't know how much your electric bill is going to cost. You, you buy it and you find out. Your electric bill's going to cost. You you buy it and you find out. I mean, I. The those numbers, I don't know. I haven't, I haven't shot for insurance. I don't have the system. I don't even know if anyone would even quote it. Um those are all things that we need to do, but. I haven't done it and I don't plan on doing it until we we have something to ensure. Um expenses paid out of O-line general fund and not being passed on to the users. So. This project, as we said, is uh fifteen years old, thirteen years old. Uh we have spent money uh besides the regular budget, which uh we have. Uh funded the WPCA sometimes up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Uh under, under my term, it's it's been much lower, maybe sixty six, eighty thousand. We we try not to use the money uh that that we have unless we need it. Um so uh. But we have spent money. Uh the 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 town has spent money on this project. Uh we spent uh ten thousand dollars on a one-time buy-in fee to the I M A in New London. Uh that is a deposit. It comes off the seven. That I told you, seven hundred and twelve thousand. We were actually financing seven hundred and two, but um. There's a reimbursement to the Beach Association, WPCAs for their costs to develop the I M A with the East Line. So when we, when we joined East Line, uh. They added us as another member. Uh they, the the Beach Associations knew we were coming in. They they had uh negotiated one hundred and eighty uh gallons per day. Uh knowing that we were gonna take uh fifty thousand gallons. Uh so. All those costs of attorneys and and doing everything they had to 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 get that I M A across. When it finally went through, we paid our share. Um that was for sixty six thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and fifty six cents. This past year, um to. Be a full member of the C S A, uh. We reimbursed um. Uh the Beach Associations, another thirty nine thousand, two hundred and forty five dollars for other miscellaneous expenses. That they had incurred. Um both of these uh bills and invoices were reviewed by the WPCA and voted on. Uh they were signed by the selectmen at the time uh and paid by town finances. Um and again, all all legal fees in developing the I M As, the C S As, the assessors' reports, the special testing. That's all been out of the general fund. It's not gonna be passed on to the end users. It's part of, I guess. The town feeling though that we have a WPCA, their function is to do this. And so they're funding some of this uh stuff uh that would not be covered under C W F funding. So I wanted to talk about this. So Rich Prindergas made this statement. To the London Day. I I thought it was in two thousand nineteen. I guess it was in twenty twenty two. Um about how much money has been spent on this project. And all I get is, well, there's missing money. There's mu- money, money's been spent. Where is it? And I've said, Rich was talking about all of the Beach Associations. The Town of Old Line and the joint project together. He was not saying this project, I D O line. So I I requested and received uh the the documentation from. Uh C W D P or C W F, the the loan values uh remaining or what was, what has been spent. Uh uh to date, and this is. Uh gross, it's not, it's not without the twenty five percent. Uh this numbers comes out less by about twenty five percent. Uh when you take out the uh. The the grant month. But in any event, one million nine a- approximately, so I'm gonna surround these numbers off. One million ninety thousand dollars been on internal uh shared infrastructure. Oh, I'm sure spent around six hundred and sixty six thousand to develop their internal infrastructure. Miami Beach spent about six hundred and ninety six thousand to develop theirs. Uh whole O-line Colony, Old Colony uh spent five hundred and seventy one thousand for theirs. We spent six hundred and fifteen thousand uh for ours and out of pocket expenses, which is uh. Which is uh money that O-line has spent as well as the Beach Association. So if we reimburse the Beach Associations. Around a hundred thousand dollars, that was only twenty nine point seven percent of the total share of what was spent. So there's, there's been like three hundred and fifty six thousand dollars of that money and we've spent other monies. Uh uh for uh bond attorney and referendum that have been out of pocket. That come up to four million, forty seven dollars, six hundred and thirty dollars, uh four million, forty seven thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. So I I think it ties out pretty good when he says it's close to four point one million dollars. Um you know, we. We we only have a budget of, e- even if we 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 have a small budget in in the WPCA. We we could never have spent four point one million dollars because it was never uh allocated to us to begin with. Um you know, average cost of, let let's say, average budget of eighty thousand dollars a year. Over uh fifteen years would be one point two million dollars. Um. I I mean, this, this is, this is what Rich was speaking about. This, this is. The mystery four point one million dollars. Um. I I honestly don't know what, that's it. So we're asking for an increase for the referendum amount uh because of inflation impact. Forty or fifty percent rise in construction materials costs from pre-COVID to post-COVID. The original estimates were developed by the engineering groups over a decade ago and assumed a steady two percent inflation rate and did not anticipate. A period of hyperinflation. Who pays for the project? Initially, the project is being funded through DEEP using C W F funds. This is a revolving program which funds are lent out for construction and then repaid by the users in most cases. The WPCA will assess each property owner based upon the E D U system that was developed by its governing WPCA. Each property owner has the right to pay their loan back over twenty years at two percent interest. It is the intent of O-line WPCA to have the end users pay for the cost of this project. O-line WPCA is requesting higher spending authority. Though the amount being financed still under the original referendum amount of nine point five million due to state matching funds. So. We need permission. To spend it because the project is going to cost me. Because the state is kicking in another twenty five percent. The the amount being financed is still less than the original nine and a half million dollars. Uh but. Bound Council said that because we're spending more, we have to request authority to spend it. What happens if it doesn't pass? You know, I I hope it does pass, but if it doesn't, we risk uh E P A D E P fines. Uh. I believe we would most likely be issued at that po- uh point with a consent order from DEEP instructing sewers to be installed. Uh we will probably lose the twenty five percent forgivable loan. Uh. Any delay will probably increase the cost over time. And uh there's continued environmental and property risk. Next steps. Well, today I presented to the Board of Selectmen. Uh it goes to the Board of Finance to move to to town.
August twelfth.
August twelfth.
You'll be expected at the, if we decide to proceed. We, we went through these dates with you last week. I hope so.
Uh informational meeting, uh August eighteenth.
And where is that going to be here?
The informational meeting is at the high school.
High school, so.
Says center school here.
High school, center school's closed. That doesn't open until August twenty second. It's at, it is at.
At the high school, okay.
High school, the only school that's open.
Change that also. The town meeting?
Oh, you've got where to vote.
Information. Oh, that's right. Where to vote, isn't that?
No, middle school is where we vote. That's our, that's our.
All right.
Okay, so. The middle school meeting is at the high school and the vote is at the middle school.
Right.
Thanks.
The town, and the town meeting is also at the high school.
Okay.
Okay.
And uh the hours of uh voting are twelve to eight, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And there will be absentee ballots are available.
Correct.
And it's the eighth, not the ninth of September.
You know, I I had the eighth, Rich, I just changed it to the ninth. I took a picture of that thing. I think it's the ninth.
It's the ninth.
I have down the ninth.
It's the ninth because it's a Tuesday.
Oh, I changed it, that's why.
Okay, so yeah, I get it. Thank you.
Um. So in conclusion, uh. Authorization for another seven point six million dollars now secures seventeen point one million dollars in infrastructure. Uh it will protect our environment, health and property values. And long-term savings for Soundview and Area B residents. Um I know. I know it sounds. You know, how am I gonna save money? But ask anyone that has to put a septic system down there. I mean, you're gonna spend a lot of money. When your, when your septic system fails, you'll. You'll spend that money in today's dollars. You won't, you won't, two thousand dollars twenty years ago is probably not gonna be that much money. Uh forty to fifty, sixty thousand dollars today is a lot of money that you're gonna have to uh. Put down to fix a septic system if if it fails. And I don't know what else I can, I can stress about. So uh that, that's about it for my presentation. I hope I answered uh. Some questions, but uh. Are there any questions?
The questions are coming from the Board of Selectmen because this is a presentation to the Board of Selectmen. When we get to public comment, because this is not a public, a town meeting. Steve will not respond to you, but we will make a record of all your questions and Steve will put those together. And put some type of thing for frequently asked questions. Um so Jen, if you can capture those questions. So when you come up to public comment again, if you have. Questions that you want answered that are not on these slides. You need to form it as a question. These are the questions I want answered. Okay? Um and we'll ask our questions now. So Jim, would you like to start? Cause I know you're.
And Steve, I I appreciate the work you've done on this. Uh I sent you a spreadsheet last week and. You've uh taken a good cut at addressing a lot of the questions I had, so just wanna thank you for that. Um there is some, uh I I think we we may have a different read of the East Line. I M A, um so I'd like to sit down with you on the side. And we can hash that out together, see what our differences are. Uh. There is uh a couple of numbers I would still be looking for. Uh again, I don't wanna take up too much time in this meeting with them. Uh by oxide station maintenance, et cetera, and uh pump station maintenance especially for our shared infrastructure. Uh which which I didn't see reflected in operations and maintenance fees, but.
Speak up, because they can't hear you right there. No, our mics are not working.
Sorry, I was talking to Steve more than anything. Uh I I would be looking for a couple additional numbers. Uh from Steve and rather than take time here at this meeting. I'd like to sit down with him on the side and see if we can get those numbers so we can get something. Uh that we would all feel comfortable with in terms of inaccurate operations and maintenance uh budget. Uh some of the bigger questions. Are where we're at with the cost sharing agreement and where we're at. With the uh sewer ordinance, which we talked about more or less three legs to the stool before we moved to referendum. We wanted to see a complete accounting of our potential costs. We wanted to see of a sewer referendum that would codify the notion that if this system expands beyond. The current project, beyond the current geographic area, that expansion would be self-funding. That Point of Woods, Old Line Shores, Old Colony, Soundview, Miami Beach would pay zero. For the expansion of the sewer system beyond our current project.
Well, it's actually more nuanced than that. It's the end users that will be responsible to pay for it.
Right. However, we we, it's it's.
They're not, it's not excluding Soundview and those people. It's excluding everyone in town except for the end users.
Correct, correct. And and that we would need to see codified in the sewer ordinance because a lot of people are worried. That if we get sewers going up Four Mile River or Rogers Lake or Hall's Road or the White Sands. That people who have already paid a hundred percent of a project would be on the hook for that. So we want that. And in the ordinance, uh the cost sharing agreement, uh we've been bouncing it back and forth. You have my comments on that. Uh I've spoken to a a couple of leadership from some of the other beach associations. There's. Differing opinions on where we are on that. Uh how how would you read our status?
I I would read, so the, we we had a uh a uh conversation on Saturday morning. Uh about the C S A.
And who who was, who was involved in that?
Well, that it, O-line Shores is difficult to to get participation, but uh. Miami Beach and O-line, uh and Old Colony uh and and us. And uh we've agreed to have uh the beach attorney. Uh schedule some dates with Mike Carey so that everyone can sit down in a room, all stakeholders. That would be the Town of O-line. Town of O-line WPCA, O-line Shores, Miami Beach, and go through all the comments now. Line by line, come up with a final draft and have it drafted.
Do you know when that date is gonna be?
I think I asked for for several dates. It's not one date come or miss it.
How far out is that?
Um we're trying to do it before the end of uh August.
Uh I would like to be present at that.
Yeah.
If possible.
Uh so you know, I I wanted to go back. One thing, I I know I did not uh include this. I meant to. In my thing. So seventeen point one million dollars, the referendum. Uh if it's approved, it. I I hear people say, well, we don't know, we don't know the cost of Miami Beach. We don't know the cost of O-line Shores. I, those costs are internal costs that won't affect us one way or the other. The only way they could affect us is if. They don't go forward with the project. And then there's uh uh three, three members instead of four. Um this seventeen point one million dollars is figured with four members. It's not figured with three. So if one person drops out, we won't have enough money. In the referendum to do the project. It's not. It it is, it, we we, I fully expect all four people to do this project. But if one doesn't, we will not be able to move forward without having another referendum. Because we will not have enough money in the referendum to cover the the expense of the person dropping out.
I I, this is a good time to address that then. In terms of our timeline, where. Ideally, if we were going to hit the referendum date that we were just talking about, we. Here today would be moving this to the Board of Finance. And uh. In this scenario, where we know in the last round, my, the reason we're here now is that Miami Beach received no bids. Uh and that's what's delayed this project. Uh Old Colony received their bids. We received bids for the shared infrastructure. Uh Soundview received its bids. Miami, no one bid on it. Uh and they've had to go back out to bid. O-line Shores did not go out to bid, so. Uh tha- that's why we find ourselves in this situation with contractors having to extend their bids.
Uh correct, correct.
Uh I would be concerned about moving this project forward without knowing the status of at least Miami Beach. It's been expressed that we could possibly make this work without O-line Shores. We cannot make this work without Miami Beach.
Uh we can't, we can't make this. I I have. I I don't have. Uh in in, believe it or not, we would only spend another what, three point, I mean, it'd be thirty three percent. We're at twenty nine point seven. We'd spend three point three percent. I don't have three point three percent fluff in seventeen point one million. That that numbers has fifty thousand dollars basically to cover uh uh the bonding cost.
Yeah.
So i- if someone drops out, there will not be enough money. To go forward. You would have to go back out for referendum.
Well, that that is something I would like to avoid because I think if we go out to referendum. We have to have the three legs of that stool. We need to know what the costs are. And if we, we need to be assured at least that Miami Beach is gonna be part of this project. And we're gonna know that in a couple of. And if we we need to be assured at least that Miami Beach is gonna be part of this project. And we're gonna know that in a couple of weeks. On the seventeenth of August, or nineteenth, whatever it's been moved out to. Uh we would need to have. Some kind of assurance that we we're going to have a cost sharing agreement. We would need to have some assurance that we're going to have a revised sewer ordinance. If we have those three legs of the stool, I'd feel more comfortable in moving this to a referendum. Because people will have the information they're gonna need to make an informed decision. Uh in the end. You could say, well, the Board of Selectmen is only in an advisory position, but we saw in Hall's Road that Hall's Road came to us. And Hall's Road is just like sewers. This is going on long before this administration. But it's in our lap and we get blamed for it if it goes wrong. So we have to make sure that it goes right. And when Hall's Road came to us, the notion was, well, this has been, it was funded under Griswold. It was all put together before you came in. It's been voted on in town meetings. You have to move this along. And rather than bog it down here, we've moved it along to zoning. In the end, we got blamed for it, or at least Martha and I got blamed for it. Sewers is very similar. I mean, there are, the reason why we're having this discussion is is uh. Tim Griswold signed IMAs, he signed a bond, and the town's been obligated to move forward. So no matter what I think of sewers. We have to play the process out if we're talking about the town. The town can't just fail. At least that's my perspective.
If 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 we don't have the funding available. Uh we can't move forward.
But I don't want to recommend that we move this forward. I mean, I think I personally have a responsibility. Uh I I don't know.
What's the drop dead date that we would have to announce a referendum? Because we can still do public information presentations. Um unlike Hall's Road. We have not signed a document saying that we have agreed on this. And we are not the applicant. I believe Martha signed a form saying she was the applicant. Bonnie Ream Snyder invited deep in here to do an assessment. And it began prior to Tim's. It carried through that. And I understand we do not want to end up in the same situation. So what is a drop dead date that we would have to advertise a referendum?
The problem we're having now.
August. I believe it's August twenty eighth.
Okay, so thank you.
August twenty eighth.
Because of the holidays.
Advertisement for referendum. Um and then September second would be the. Meeting, the town meeting to which would move authorize it.
And the referendum.
And the referendum would be seven days later.
On the night.
Well, that's all saying that everything falls into place and everything goes accordingly. We can always have an emergency meeting at any point in time. So can the Board of Finance. In fact, we can schedule them back to back if we have to. To meet dates. If in a week or two more questions are answered, or. You see where you are after your informational session on the eighteenth. Um those are all things that we can do. Um to continue to move it along. And that's only because. The state would like to, and and I'll get into my comments. I'll wait until I I get to it. But those are dates wise. That's where we are.
Okay, okay, so. There are still a few things that I would like to see, because what I don't wanna do under any circumstances. Is recommend that we move forward. With questions unanswered, with CSA still hanging out there, that may blow up. I don't know what's gonna happen in that room. I mean, the. Version of it that I saw is, you know, where I I find it to be very, very close. You know, I we've been talking about this for a year now, and I encouraged uh. You to mo- move forward with it while we're waiting for my end. And there's a lot of progress. There's still a lot of things, as you know, need to be cleaned up. Uh that did clearly didn't make sense or were contradictory, but it's stuff that can be done. The ordinance can be done. Will it be done? I don't know. But I would like to be assured that we're there before we move forward. Because the last thing I wanna do is say. You know, even though the voters are gonna decide in the end whether this moves forward. I don't wanna give it our seal of approval, knowing that this isn't done, that isn't done, these numbers aren't here. We go to referendum, we can't do the project, we have to go back to referendum. Then people will say, you know, you guys don't know what the hell you're doing. So we need to know what the hell we're doing before we move forward.
The the. Ornance, I I will speak to council and get that done. It it's a paragraph. I I don't know where to put it, but I I instructed.
It's not much, right.
To to do it. Um and and there was a comment that Mary Daly made that I wanted to look into too on paragraph four point two. Um that was, that was it. That that ordinance has been vetted uh by council. It's been uh had public comment on it. I mean, it. I I honestly don't know why. I think I think Richard's waiting for the next, I don't know, to get passed at a town hall, uh town meeting.
Town meeting.
I think he was waiting for the next town meeting to to put it for a vote.
Well, we've had many town meetings at that time.
I I realize that. So uh that that I should be able to get relatively quickly. CSA, I mean, I gotta get. Five, four, four parties, five parties together in a room for a couple hours. Um I personally don't think it's going to be uh.
Contentious?
I don't think most of it will be contentious. I think that there's a misunderstanding of of the deep. The deep shared infrastructure loan by some parties that I think their attorneys try and help clear on before we meet. Um.
And and finally, Steve, uh one of the reasons why we're. It's important that we move quickly is these bids have expired. They've been extended.
Excellent.
Uh and they expire again in October. So. So if we don't, if we don't have decision to move forward by the fifteenth. Then we have to go back to these contractors, ask them to extend again. And of course, that's always a bit of an unknown. And then things start slipping. We know Old Lime Shores may or may not be ready in time. Uh.
The the direction from DEP was pretty specific that they will be awarding at the same time uh the rest of the groups.
When was that um issued to them? This was a recently?
I I believe, I I believe it was Friday.
Uh can set out certain milestones that have to be met. My final question for now, I know I would have to turn it over to Martha and Jude. Uh we, I'm sorry, but this is what I'm here for, right? Uh so the contractors that we have right now who bid on the project. Of those uh who has guaranteed that they will hold their bid?
Alright, so I have that document from Kurt. That, uh and by the way, uh you had also asked. About how much the the cost. Um of of the dock bridge is going to cost us?
Yeah, the two bridges, what?
Yeah, so we we net, we net a uh uh, I think it's it's a, it's in his. It's in his uh notes. I'll have to, I'll have to give this, I'll have to figure out a way of uh. I have to figure out a way of of either including it or or something better than this. But um. In his notes, he indicates that everyone, that that no one has said they're going to increase their costs. No, no one, they they said they want the option to increase their costs if inflation is effective their materials. Okay, but right now, that's that's right.
That's up one.
That's it right here. Alright, there's also a hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred ninety dollar credit. In these figures, provided for savings delta CT dot paving along Route one fifty-six. Versus big cost for sewer crossings, SCT dot bridges. So uh the. They're they're taking out the overlay on one fifty-six because the state's going to do that. Um the cost, the cost, I believe, uh for the CT bridges was around seven hundred ninety thousand dollars. The cost of paving was around uh uh. Uh nine hundred eighty-three thousand. So because we're not paving, we pick up a delta of of that. That's why. There's not a separate line item up there for the dock bridges.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
On number one.
Yes.
The last blue sentence says, the escalation for bid extensions to October twenty twenty-five. Are indeterminate at this time and not incorporated herein. So he Kurt is even indicating that some of those bids could go up.
Of course they could. They 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 want the option to, but I mean. Y- yes, I it's not on on, if a bid's five million dollars, it's not on five million dollars. It's on the materials. It's on anything that was affected by, it's not even on fuel. It's it's labor and materials. So labor hasn't gone up. Um it's it's prescribed by the state every July first on projects like this. And materials, as far as I can tell, have not gone up. If they have, it's it's minor, but. It it's not, as I said, i- it it's not going to be. You know, they're not gonna add millions of dollars to these bids. If if it if it's a couple thousand bucks maybe, but uh. You know, I don't know how much PBC's gone up since. It it's three months. It it could have been at the date of award.
Right.
Versus three months later. I mean, it's not uh that that much, so.
I just. Are you done? Are you done?
Uh just my final is. Are the latest bids all included in the Fussin' O'Neil spreadsheet you just gave us today?
Yes.
Alright, so I'll. I'll I'll leave it there then, because I know we just got this, so I didn't have a chance to review it, so we'll discuss that.
I don't even think you have that.
I was going to say, I haven't received.
You don't, you don't have those two. You don't, you have my old one, but you don't have Fussin' O'Neil's because it's a link.
So those. But you can print that link, though, into a PDF and send it to us as a document.
I'll send you the document.
That would be great. Any and any verbiage that goes with that spreadsheet.
I'll just forward Kurt's email.
Okay, fine. Did more? Do you wanna go? Want me to go?
I'm I will probably be shorter than you. Um I would like to receive that information, review it, and hold. An additional meeting between now and if necessary.
We're not, we're not even on to the.
Okay.
Voting part, because that's in new business. We're just talking about.
Understood. But without that information, I would feel better.
Yep.
Reviewing it first. Thank you.
So I'm gonna comment on your presentation. As I, and I'm looking at it as a taxpayer in town who comes to the high school for this meeting, what questions may I have asked? So I think that some of the things on your page four, which talks about the current system challenges. Um I think we can all agree, we have some aging septic systems, although there are some people putting them in, and they put them in in the last few years. But I think that there's a lot of miscommunications about. The beach ratings that come out every week from Ledge Light. As being, yes, we get great ratings and we've had some great seasons. But. When the deep talks about the environmental risk to Long Island Sound, they're not talking about our weekly beach ratings. They're talking about. The groundwater contamination that will eventually affect Long Island Sound. May not be affecting it now on a weekly basis, but it could in the future. So I think some clarification on that as far as um. And then this graph that you have on page five, I think it needs some more um. Titles underneath it. It says like original, additional, total. I think you might wanna go back to like, it would see original cost in. Blank, whatever year it was, additional now, just so that the norm, somebody who's reading it. Um so Steve, one of the things that you talked about with the cost and this particular. Referendum summary that you have in. And I'm not sure what day this was said to me or who said it, but. The yearly cost per EDU comes out at nineteen thirty-nine point seven six on your newest updated one.
For you, sir.
One of weeks talked at another point, and I thought it was either at a WPCA meeting, or it could have been at a meeting with all of us. That that was three hundred dollars short of what deep says is affordable. Okay, so but if I look at some of the costs that you put in today. On page number eight, your slide eight. And if you added those up. To that nineteen thirty-nine, you'd come in at twenty-four oh one point zero eight. That's four hundred and sixty-nine dollars over what the state says might be affordable. It's four hundred and sixty-nine dollars more than what it was on the nineteen thirty-nine. So these costs, if they're included, they're not included now. But if you include them into that nineteen thirty-nine, you're now at twenty-four oh one, which could be unaffordable according to the state. That state document that you referred to, can you tell me when that was published?
Oh, ninety-seven, is that what we said? Ninety-seven.
Nineteen ninety-seven. They have not published anything more recently? Or should we ask them? Because that seems to me that's an outdated document.
I'll I'll ask them. Um I mean, it's from the Department of Environmental Protection.
I know, but they should be updating their records just like we do.
It's not.
It's not that.
DEP, not the EEP.
Okay. Another thing you mentioned, that bioxide use will be less in the summer because we're sending more. It'll be more in the winter because we're sending less.
It could, it could be.
Can you explain that, though?
Biocide is used to control hydrogen sulfide in 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 your ethylene. And so. Hydrogen sulfide develops when it sits there a long time and bacteria starts to eat. The nutrients that they like, and it produces hydrogen sulfide. Um so when it sits there. More hydrogen sulfide is produced. Probably requiring more biocide to counteract that. If it just came in and went out. You probably need far less because it doesn't have time to to uh start digesting whatever it's digesting and creating hydrogen sulfide.
Okay. Thank you. Um. Under your, on the page ten, you talk about user fees per EDU. Continued. Can you use put at three hundred gallons per day for twelve weeks and then a hundred and fifty? Can you give a more extensive example of that? Is that per household, per?
Oh, that's, yes, that's per household. Well, i- if you use two hundred seventy as the household, an equivalent. It's an equivalent dwelling. So however it's dispersed in those households, there's still two hundred and seventy EDUs. So if you figure three hundred gallons per EDU for twelve weeks, which would be high season, and a hundred fifty gallons per day. For forty weeks in low season, that would be the cost per year.
Okay.
Alright, so a typical household down there, um I think we got. Seventy percent at one EDU would be paid.
Alright, so those are other fees that would have to be considered, correct? That also.
Well, I think you're adding, I I don't know what other, if you're not adding these fees, I don't know what other fees you're talking about.
I'm talking about the fees that.
Well, I know that, but I mean, you said, you said that there's other fees of four hundred and something dollars that are included.
Like these, that are the ones on page eight.
The connection.
The connection for eighty-something dollars, right.
Which I know that Steve and I had a conversation and I asked if it had ever been voted on, if not to include it in the EDUs at a WPCA meeting. Whether it was under his reign or previous chairs. And he said he was gonna check into it. He thought it had. And I said, well, if it hasn't, then it's not legit, because the. WPCA has to vote what you're including in your ED, yeah, EDUs. Before you go before the people. So we either have to find it in past minutes. Or we have to move for forward at a WPCA meeting and discuss what it is that we're including, so that people know. So the other thing. That I have, we talked about insurance quotes. Can we at least ask Point of Woods what they pay? So we have an idea?
Sure, but that's why I said Point of Woods pays five hundred and twenty dollars a year per EDU.
In insurance?
No.
No, I.
Their whole, their whole use, their whole user fee is five hundred and twenty dollars. I tried to give them as a comparison that. You know, we should expect something very similar, but uh that's what they pay per year. And they have four pump stations. Um but that's what they pay, is five hundred and twenty dollars per year per EDU. So uh I would say the other incidentals at a hundred and forty dollars. Uh per EDU would really equal like another increase of five hundred and forty, because this is for the um. Shared infrastructure, so.
So what? Can you get, uh and I'm not sure if you know this information, but how many? How many homes are covered in the old line, um, old line, old colony? You have a old line colony, I'm reading it.
I know, sorry.
Old colony, how many homes are in in the old colony association?
I thought Frank said a hundred and ninety eight, hundred and ninety two?
Okay, can we get a more, I, number on that? Can we actually know what we're dealing with houses to houses? Just so that, again, normal person looks at this and say, wise old colony paying five seventy one, wise old lime shores paying. Six sixty six. Yeah, but old lime shores bids are different now.
Well, I'm sure it says a new bid.
Right, well, this is what you said has been spent on the project. So these aren't bids.
Those aren't.
Yeah.
They're what they've spent, I'm just saying, what is it that we're? We're trying, when we go to look at EDUs, also, it would be interesting to compare apples to apples. How many houses? I'm not changing EDUs. I know we've worked really hard on that. Um.
I can, I can, yes, I'll ask Frank how many houses are in Old Colony.
Okay.
In further, Steve, I think we should differentiate between seasonal and year-round residents. Uh, your something here is for seasonal use of water. So I would accept the three hundred gallons, EPA says four hundred, but we accept three hundred gallons. If you're a year round, that would be three hundred gallons all year, every day, three hundred sixty five days. It's more for me.
So just just for, you know, these these three hundred gallons is a lot of water use. Um, typical for for households.
Typical.
So uh, Point of Woods, uh, their their initial design goes a hundred and five thousand gallons a day. That that was their initial design. Um, they were billed uh, for thirty five thousand dollars a day. Uh, thirty five thou- thirty five thousand gallons per day. So they're at a quarter of their design total. I would not be surprised if we're, if we end up uh, certainly average that. But I wouldn't even be surprised even in summer if if we were lower than the design. Um, they're all over design, so I would think that's high, but.
It could be, I'm just saying, make an assumption for a year-round residence versus a seasonal.
How many, how many, how many people live in Soundview year round?
More and more. You'd be surprised. I mean, it's more and more now that that you see ever since.
Can provide me the the amount of people that live there year round, I'll plug them in.
I I'm just saying, if you had, you know, it it doesn't have to be, it could just be, if you have a year-round residence, this is what. It'll probably cost reuse. If you have a seasonal residence, so people can make their own assumption.
I I, alright, I just think that. I I think that uh, using three hundred gallons per day. For a year-round residence that has four people living in it. Is is an extremely high figure. I know that's what the code says you use. Um, but that would mean, that would mean seventy five gallons a day per person is being used every single day. I I don't want to skew it to to the other end. This is not going to affect assessment. This isn't. I'm trying to give an estimate for what I think, the minimum, not not the, not the highest, but the minimum is, I I don't. I I mean, I'll I'll run the numbers.
If you look, if you look up what use per household is, it's three hundred gallons per day. So you have it here for twelve weeks, which is appropriate for the summer, but you drop it to a hundred and fifty for forty weeks.
One of the reasons I did that is East Line did that. One of the reasons I did that, C S Line did that in in their calculations for us. They they lowered their uh. In their calculation, they 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 had twelve weeks of of that and then a hundred and fifty gallons uh, for for the rest of the season. Um, and they're they're using that formula to bill us, so. I can, I can show you the calculation later. But it's. Let's go on my writing on it. So this is a potential old line conveyance cost. And uh. Uh, they blocked it out, I I have, mine isn't blocked out, but um, in season, out of season. You know, um, they they did that and then they said estimated yearly flows, six million four hundred ninety five thousand gallons is what I used there. Um, in the East Line figure. So I figured if they're basing their their billings on that. Then most likely uh, they have some insight into seasonal stuff, but if you want, I'll. I'll put down a full, a full-time user, but I just don't think it's going to be correct.
Okay, anything else for this presentation? So you're going to make a few changes to your presentation. We're going to let you know where we go. I don't know if you're sticking around.
I I, well, I'd like to stick on, um, I'd like to, uh, I'd appreciate.
Well, actually, you probably should, it's your second thought.
I would appreciate it if if the board would just forward me any other comments so I can cooperate.
Yes, we will. If you're not staying, but we will get them.
Interesting.
I will get them out um, to you as quickly as possible. I can pull them from, Jen doesn't have them from the uh, transcript tomorrow morning. So we'll, we'll do that.
Okay.
And then you can.
Not forward of the, of the Kirk stuff, I mean.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we're going to move on to new business and I do ask that we can add one thing, amend the agenda one more time. To include carryovers because now that Board of Finance is meeting on the twelfth. We need to approve carryovers. I sent them to you all on Friday and I have further explanations, but if we can just add that. Um, to uh.
I did not bring it because it wasn't on the agenda. Thank you.
Alright.
I'll make the motion to add carryover to the business.
I'll second.
Thank you. Can we make that E F under new business?
I'll make a motion to add carryover as item number F. Under new business.
Thank you. Okay, uh, any? Further discussion? Okay, Anita is not here. Oh, I think she might be on, um, but um, we are. No further discussion. All those in favor of adding carryover to uh, F under new business, say aye.
Aye.
Any uh, any opposed? None, any objections? None, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, first thing on new business, these appointments and vacancies, boards and commissions. Um, Fred Verillo's term on the senior center board expired at the end of June. He remembered to reapply and um, Peter Lucasey would like him to be renamed back to the board. So I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Fred Verillo to the senior center board as a full voting member. Beginning July one, twenty twenty five.
I will second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those. In favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension, motion passes. Alright, then we have um, something that came before uh, Anita. Provided this to the Board of Finance at our, one of our meetings in July. But basically, she received this letter from um, Clifton Lars, who's our auditors, um. About using client data to get some analysis information. Um, this is not um. Individual, this is a town at whole, as to what our numbers are. Remember, all of our audits are public documents anyways, but they wanted to use old line. To do cost comparisons, performance indicator or benchmarking analysis. Um, the thoughts on, from the Board of Finance were that they were not too concerned about this. Because the data is already out there, they're just basically asking for um. Using our trial balance summary.
I'll make a motion to grant permission to Clifton Allen.
Uh, Lars.
Lars, this is sorry.
Larson, Clifton Larson Allen.
To use the information to do analysis regarding our finance for the town of Old Line.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I would like to make sure that no personal information is used as part of our agreement. Uh, with them and that the information they use is public and we're not turning over information to them for the purpose of AI training.
Okay, I think the, if, it is pretty clear, but I will go through. But Leslie's indication is we would only be importing your trial balance summary, which is typically public, public knowledge. So, but I will have Anita check one more time.
I agree with Jim's disclaimer regarding um, personal information.
Okay. Anita will check on the personal information, but barring that, we are approving consent to use this. Um, information for their analysis. All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Any extensions, motion passes. Making my notes so I make sure that gets published tomorrow. Alright. Then we move on to the Ferry Road Sidewalk Project. Um, Tim provided us in July. An audit of the Ferry Road Sidewalk Project. I'm just going to read his summary very quickly to read into record. After approximately four years and ten months of planning, obtaining approvals, obtaining a steep grant, communication with project debaters. Construction and follow-up, I'm pleased to report that the Ferry Road Sidewalk Project has been completed. As you may see in the attached Ferry Road Sidewalk Project spreadsheet, the total amount expended was. Two hundred and seventy six thousand eight hundred ninety eight dollars and sixty cents. The major portions of this were payments to our sidewalk contractor, Flona Font Creek. And asphalt paving of Woodbridge, Connecticut, in the amount of a hundred and eighty five thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. And Nathan L. Jacobson and Associates of Chester, Connecticut, in the amount of seventy six thousand five hundred and forty four dollars and eighty five cents. The town received a steep grant proceeds in the amount of a hundred and twenty six thousand on September nineteenth, twenty twenty four. After all the bills were paid, the project has a remaining balance of eleven thousand fifty nine dollars and sixty six cents. Which I recommend to be returned to the town surplus. I thank my fellow committee members for their dedicated work on the project and Anita Mancini for her competent financial management and accounting help. I can include this as an attachment as an addendum to this, uh, the meeting minutes along with his spreadsheet. So I just would like a motion that we are moving this. To the Board of Finance for recommendation to to move the remaining balance to the town surplus.
I'll make a motion to move the Ferry Road Project file accounting and closeout to the Board of Finance.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? I'll just say, great job to Tim and his committee for doing such a great job.
Right, and I would suggest that the remaining, if possible, eleven thousand dollars be earmarked for future sidewalk projects.
That would be great. Well, so do you want to make that a friendly amendment to his meant motion?
I would like to amend Jim's motion to include any surplus funds regarding the Ferry Road Sidewalk Project. Be returned to the town surplus, but earmarked for future sidewalk projects.
Do you agree with?
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, so we are going to suggest to the Board of Finance that we have the remaining balance of eleven thousand fifty nine dollars and sixty six cents. Be returned to the town surplus, but earmarked in a fund for future by sidewalk. Development or maintenance. All those in favor?
For uh, for um, constructing new sidewalks.
Constructing.
Yes, not for shoveling sidewalks or anything like that.
But what about, yeah, but what about when a kind sidewalk goes, breaks apart, is that considered?
Future sidewalk projects.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, motion passes. Hey, that's the Ferry Road sidewalks. Then we move on to the Open Space Commission. As you know, last time Anne Redfield and Greg Fatoma came before us. To talk about conservation easements. They provided us with a document which I sent to both of you on Friday again. So that you would have it and Anne went through this with us at our last meeting. Basically, what we are at giving them is approval to start the preliminary process for easements. It is not a done deal, it is just a preliminary process at this point in time. And then they would continue to give us updates as the process goes through. Can I get a motion to approve the preliminary process for open space for conservation easements?
So moved.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those uh, in favor. Of approving the open space proposal for conservation easements to go into preliminary mo- motion. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, motion passes. Jen, I also have a copy of that, can go in the minutes. Okay, the next one up is the amendment resolution. Related to the Soundview Beach and Miscellaneous Town Area Beach Sewer Project. You were sent a copy of this on Friday, basically, this resolution, I'm just going to read the brief. Paragraph resolution authorizing an appropriation of, uh, sorry, wait, that's the older one, sorry. I know, it's so much. Oh, let's see. Uh, basically, the ballot would say, shall the town of Old Line authorize an increase in its existing appropriation for the Soundview Beach and Miscellaneous. Town Area Beach Sewer Project by seven million six hundred thousand dollars. And that's would be what we would be forwarding to the Board of Finance. To see if they wanted to move the resolution to a town meeting. Is there discussion on that? I think we've sort of.
I think we made our points. I'd like this to be postponed until we have the further information that we requested.
I'll second.
We don't even need to say a second. We're just. So we are choosing not to go forward with the motion at this time and that until further information is made available to us. And Steve, we will work on you to help you get, gather any.
And that, if it needs to be before their meeting on the twelfth, I am very receptive to calling a special meeting for them.
I would, for myself, I would want to see Miami Beach numbers. I would want to see more progress before we move on CSA and ordinance before we move it, so the twelfth may be.
Tight, tight.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay, then we move to carryover request. Um, Anita has provided us with a carryover request. I have the book Bible of carryover requests that. If there's anything that you question, I can give you more data on from Anita. Of why they asked for it to be carried over. Anita has gotten extremely strict. Things are not, you're not moving certain things over only for capital projects.
I would like to thank her for that.
I do too.
Yeah.
Um, so basically, our total carryover request, I'm just trying to. Fiscal year. Approved to be carried over would be. One mil.
One point four?
One point, one million four hundred and six thousand?
Yes.
Two hundred and forty seven dollars and eighty six cents, and that's for multiple projects that are in process at the moment.
I am happy to make a motion to carry over one point four oh six, two hundred and forty seven and eighty six cents.
Also.
Any further discussion? This will, of course, will go for the Board of Finance, they get the final say. Okay. No for. Yeah, I know, I'm going there. Now, that no further discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the carryover amount of one million four hundred and six thousand two hundred and forty seven dollars and eighty six cents, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any? Any opposed? Any extensions, motion carries. Anita has this book in her office, if you want to ever come in and read more, she'll be more than happy to go over it with you when she comes back from vacation. Okay, next is public comments. We are back to public comment. And I appreciate all of you who have stayed with us and. And most of this public comment is going to be geared in questions that you want answered. Um, so we can provide you with the most information that you need. As we move forward with this project. So what first we're going to ask for those people in the audience. Again, question format, state your name, you probably don't have to restate your address because we probably already have it. But let's do the questions and just do them in order, one, two, three, four, five, whatever you have, and we'll get them in, okay? Alright, and also, as you said, you can always email the WPCA as well, it's. Steve, it's Chair, Chair WPCA at Old Lime. Steve, it's Chair, Chair WPCA at oldlime-dct.gov, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Did you say that over time?
Yes. Chair WPCA at oldlime-dct.gov. You're welcome. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who has further questions that need to be answered in this presentation? For you to feel comfortable? Come on up.
Frank Teddy, twenty-nine Swan Avenue. I thought you brought up some excellent points. I'm sorry, I don't hear his name. I brought some excellent points about the EDU and all that stuff and seasonal versus non-seasonal. I'm a, I'm a non-seasonal person. I'm only here six months, six months. So why do I have to pay this same money that the seasonal people, it should be broken down. Should be broken down. So, you know, he's taking an estimate of, of, and the other thing you brought up was the number of households in each, in each, each each beach association, which is definitely an important factor. If there's more in one area than around another, and I'm only referring to Soundview. I mean, why should we pay? He's taking an average of everything, and I think it's unfair to the people that in Soundview that are only seasonal, because there's less seasonal people there than, than probably the other beaches. And then also the cost associated. And you brought the point about that it increased another four hundred dollars for the EDU. Yeah, I mean, so sure, spread over twenty years, but you know, I cannot, you know, the numbers are still all over the place. So I think they've definitely, before you even have a referendum on anything, you've definitely got to lock this thing down that are all the four beaches going to be involved? Because there'll be an, you know, an extra cost. And then, so there's, and then the final cost. Because per household, per household, not the whole total budget, but per household, because that's what I'm concerned about was going to cost me for twenty years. So, and I don't seem to get those answers. They're just seem to be all over the place. But you brought up a lot of excellent points, and I'm glad you brought a lot of those things up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to offer? Joanne?
Joanne Lishing, L I S H I N G.
Thank you. Seventy-five Swan Avenue. Yes, I want to first thank you all for all the effort and patience that you put in, including the WPCA folks. I appreciate the hard work. One of the questions I have is where is the oversight of WPCA? Where's that plan? And how is, you know, it? How the money management, basically, for the WPCA? The other thing is Martha, you brought it up very well when you started to add up some of the expenses that each household would pay. And that's what I'm missing. I cannot figure it out. You know, you see a little here, a little there, and you wonder, wait a minute, that isn't right. So the clarity and transparency is definitely lacking. Let's see. So we've talked about the the guys who are going to do all the work and all these contractors, et cetera, and these fees. We have to think about inflation and we have to think about hyperinflation, because we have tariffs to deal with now. And a lot of, I know a lot of materials come from Canada. So things need to be looked at a little bit differently. Of course, the other thing that I'm not supposed to talk about is why can't we have separate systems? Okay? Everyone do their own. But anyway, that's neither here nor there. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joanne.
Paula?
Paula Malillo, twenty-one fifteen Portland Avenue. I have a couple of concerns that maybe could have clarification. One is, right, the three hundred gallons, twelve weeks, and the amount calculated was three hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-two cents. But then there were exclusions, and I don't know what the exclusions are. And so it was said that with these exclusions, it could be five hundred to six hundred dollars a year. So what is it?
Okay.
The other thing is one point one five eight billion dollars was already spent from the general funds. And so we are not obligated as people who are expecting sewers to pay for that, correct?
We'll get the answer as quick.
Four point one.
I, I was concerned if that over a million dollars was calculated for, you know, sewer exploration. Why were other systems explored, alternate systems explored with all that million dollars that was spent? I did hear Mr. Potter give a presentation and then nothing was done after it. And he seemed to have some, you know, good alternative ideas. The other, the the four point one million dollars, thank you for the clarification of that. However, Old Lime, our Old Lime WPCA discharged the six, six hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred dollars. Yes, there was shared infrastructure of over a million dollars. How much of that is going to be paid by WPCA of Old Lime or the residents? And then other pot of pocket costs, those four hundred and six thousand dollars? Is that money all going to be divided among us or the beaches? And is that amount that was spent calculated in the total costs of the residents? I'm concerned about the capacity of New London. I did see the article also about the expansion that, that East Lime is proposing. And the expansion costs were fifty million dollars or so. What's that going to cost be to us in the future? And is the system going to accommodate our sewage? I'm concerned about the referendum when the status of other bids are not in yet. And as Joanne said, I do not know what the bottom line is for my property. I do have a lot and that nothing is on, and it's included with two other lots. And it's not a separate lot. So is that going to be, you know, billable as a building lot or not? I don't know if that's been clarified at WPCA meetings as to what are empty lots or buildable lots. And I think that is it.
Thank you, Paula. You're welcome. Steve, is there a possibility? I'm just going to suggest that maybe there's possibility that each address that you've acquired for an EDU, you might be able to put out a list for it to be on your website or, and sent to Soundview residents. Maybe clean it up a little bit, because like, I mean, I've seen it. Not, I don't know if I've seen the latest form, but it was a little difficult to read at one time, point in time. So just make sure it's clear. Here's the address. Here's your EDU. Okay. Anyone else? Kathleen? Tracy?
Kathleen Tracy, seventy-six Hartford Ave. Thank you for postponing the referendum until we have more information. I really appreciate that. You know, there was a lot of information there and, and some of it I couldn't see, that, that big long thing. And it's, it's difficult, but the twenty-nine percent that the Soundview people are responsible for is a concern of mine. If there's four entities, why is this, I think relatively smaller group paying twenty-nine percent? Like, you know, almost a third. I, I just don't know where that number comes from, and I'm a little concerned that we are paying more than our fair share. Again, it wasn't clear to me in the presentation why, I know we are paying twenty-nine percent, but I just don't know why.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Mary?
So thank you for clarifying and all the information today. Much appreciated. Answered a lot of questions we've been asking for months and months. So we appreciate that. So I'm looking at this draft from Fussin' O'Neill today, and I can understand how some people might think that Soundview is getting the best deal here. Because when you look at this paper.
Hey, Mary.
Yes.
If you're commenting, are you commenting on the Fussin' O'Neill numbers or do you want clarification on them?
Clarification.
So can you ask it in a form of a question so we can put it, an answer to it?
Okay.
Thanks.
So, okay. When I look at these numbers, it says thirty-one, six eighty-one, as we heard today. I calculated out to thirty-eight thousand worth of interest. Anyway, the thirty-one, six eighty-one, when you were asking about Old Colony, which is very, very similar in the number of houses and empty lots, were almost identical. Their EDU on here is thirty-eight. So I ask how we are six thousand dollars more per EDU than Old Colony to start with. And I asked that everyone remember also that we are two hundred and seventy EDUs. That's my question. Which for some properties will equate to three EDUs per appraised property? And how that can be, how that can be justified? I did hear today that there was an estimate that seventy percent of our properties. And I asked this as a question then. That seventy percent of our properties will only pay one EDU. But I would like clarification on that, since when I count, and I know the EDU structure, I count one hundred and eighteen out of one hundred and ninety-nine properties will pay one EDU. The rest, almost seventy properties will pay considerably more. And as I said, up to three EDUs. So again, I thank you all. Here's my other question. I do question and would like clarification on why the Soundview contingency was reduced to five percent? When you look at Fussin' O'Neill's numbers and you calculate it out, most of them, the other beaches, the private beach associations, ranged from fourteen point two seven percent to over, to sixteen percent for each of them.
I have not received that. Yeah.
I can give you.
Steve has agreed to send it to us.
Saying, so I would like clarification on why our contingency fund is only five percent versus the fourteen to sixteen percent for the private beach associations. We are side by side on the beach. Our environment, okay? Okay.
The question, we'll get the answer.
Thank you. Thank you again for your time.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience? Dennis? Moza? Portland Dabs?
We need a clarification. Tucker Mechanical, who is the lowest bid for the pump house, pulled out. So Rainmaker, who's the second bid is taking on the project. But that's at a seven hundred thousand dollar increase in the cost of pump ups. Plus any economic indicators, if, if it goes along those lines. That's one.
So what's the question?
The question is what the presentation said was, said that no one has pulled out. They have.
Well, that was pulled out. We, I think you might, they missed that.
This is as of July, July fifteenth or sixteenth. According to, according to Mr. Mailman's presentation to Old Lime Shores. And that's who gave us these, the draft.
And what, are you telling me that Tucker Mechanical was in that presentation?
Tucker Mechanical was, which had withdrawn.
Right.
Okay. And Rainmaker is the second highest, second lowest bidder.
Yeah. Okay.
Now, Rainmaker also does the shared infrastructure. Okay, that was one. There was a comparison between us and Point of Woods. We have two hundred and sixty-nine EDUs. Point of Woods has four hundred and forty-three houses. So I don't know how you can equate our number of year round with Point of Woods year round and come out saying that we're, we're close to the same dollar amount. It's physically impossible. They have, they have probably a hundred and fifty houses more than we do. That are year round. So that was a question I need to have clarification on. Okay?
That it?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone online? Anyone else in the audience? I didn't see any other hands, so I think I'm good. Okay, moving on. Is there anyone online who would like to provide us with questions that need to be answered? Or your satisfaction? Anyone online? I'm not.
I like, I like that question, a few questions answered.
Okay, could you say your name again? We missed it.
It's Bill Randazzo.
Thank you, Bill.
Fifty-two and fifty-six Hartford Avenue.
Yeah.
There were, first of all, I'm not sure who, what selectmen it was that took the original nineteen hundred and seventy-dollar EDU. And we got it up to twenty-four hundred dollars because we finally had numbers added into the cost of actually what it is. And I think that's important that people should know that. All right? A few other things, a few other things. When, I think Steve, I believe, who is the chairman of WPCA, said property values will increase when we put the sewers in. At me, as a financial guy, that is, is a fallacy. And, and, and I don't know where his numbers are coming from. And I don't know how he got those numbers, but they're wrong. The next question he brought up was about groundwater. I had property down there three years ago. I had to go down into a pit. I had to hire my plumber. We went down twelve feet to actually extract water that was down that deep. So, you know, when we talk about groundwater, let, let's be, let's try to be explicit in concern exactly what's happening. Every year it changes about how much rain we have, how much dust we have, whatever, whatever we have. Every, everything changes. So we can't go by one year that the water level is high. That three years ago, the water level was eight feet below normal. So please, let's, let's take that out of the equation. Next thing. All right? And, and, and I'm not even sure how to ask this question. But I'll, I'll try. We're going through all this, you know, for, for sewers and everything else. And, and, and I guess DEP or DEEP is mandating that we have sewers. What happens if we say no? I mean, what actually happens? We say no, we can't afford it. It's, it's, I mean, it, it, it's way above the budget of, of people who could afford anything living, anybody living down there. And we can't afford it. The answer is no, we can't afford it. So either you put up all the money or don't mandate nothing. All right? The next thing somebody, I think, I, I think Steve brought up too was about septic. You know, if, if we relied on septic system versus what potentially we could have. Well, I, I, I think that has to be investigated more. I don't think Steve is professional in septic systems. Right? I know I'm not a professional in septic systems. I know they've come up with septic designs that are adequate for many different areas at many different water lengths, heights, and, and everything else. So I, I like to get an answer on that of, of, of why he thinks. So I, I like to get an answer on that of, of, of why he thinks engineered septic systems wouldn't work versus sewers that are, that we're, we're driving for. All right? The next thing I want to, the, the last thing I want to talk about was we, we mentioned that Point of Woods has four pumping stations. All right? Point of Woods, I, I think we announced has what, four hundred homes in, live, living in that area?
Four hundred and thirty. Yes.
Four hundred homes? All right, so we have.
Four forty-three.
Four hundred and forty-three.
Four and three.
All right, if we take our four beach associations that are tied into this and we look at what we're gonna have for pumping system, system and auger system to pump out, is one system gonna be enough to handle all that? If Point of Woods has already done the engineering and, and done, I guess, done diligence and found out four systems is, is working adequately for them. So I, I guess the question to you guys is, has anybody from an engineering standpoint looked at that and said, okay, we're gonna go into a different pipe, we're gonna go into, um, you know, a different thickness pipe or, or, or a different width pipe, uh, and our, our pumping station will be able to handle all that. Not only handle it, but how about handling it five, ten, fifteen years down the road when houses down there now become winterized and they're available for people to use all year round? Is it gonna be able to handle that kind of gray matter? I guess that's my last question. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Is there anyone else online for public comment? Yes, thank you. But I'm gonna just make sure there's nobody online. Okay. Okay, so there's no, but we do have correspondence from a couple of people. Let me pull my notes.
I'd like to make a comment. I was muted. I wasn't able to unmute it.
Okay, can I ask who's call, who you are?
Okay, uh, Daniel Tricarico, forty-one Hartford Avenue.
Yeah. Go ahead, Daniel.
Um, my questions are, uh, where is the exact list of each individual property in Soundview and Area B? What is the EDU assigned to each individual property in Soundview and Area B? And how, what is the exact formula that was determining each individual EDU assignment?
Okay.
Those are my questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And let me just go back and find those two that have to be read in.
I have Steve's.
I have Steve's too.
And I have Frank's on my phone.
I have Frank's in person.
Oh, well, you got it.
Do you have Frank? You wanna read Frank's, Steve's? You read Steve's.
All right.
This is a public comment that was asked, we read into record by Stephen Ross. And I know you've seen that too.
I have.
Board of Selectmen, I've been following the proposed sewer project with Beach Areas and Old Line for many years. And I've yet to see any test data that supports the need for sewers. The letter is regarding only Soundview and Hawks Nest because Miami Beach, Old Lime Shores, and Old Colony have their own WPCAs. There's no public access to their meeting minutes. The deep mandated sewer is based on density to address, to address pollution in Long Island Sound. The question being ignored is that there is no data presented indicating pollution in Long Island Sound and no recent test data in Soundview to identify areas where there is pollution. The WPCA has not shown any data to identify problems with septic systems in Soundview or anywhere else. Also consider the fact that there have not been any beach closures in the Old Line beaches. Few swim advisories, but that occurred after a heavy rain along the Connecticut River north of Old Line washed pollutants into the river, which then flowed into Long Island Sound and produced slightly higher than acceptable limit for bacteria. This occurs when the weather is very hot as well. No data has indicated that the increased bacterial level is coming from the Old Line beach properties. There have been beach closures occasionally in Watford and New London due to discharges from the sewer treatment plant. The irony is obvious. Some property owners in Soundview have proposed addressing any septic system problems on an individual property basis. Why build a sewer system when a new septic system for those properties that have a septic problem is more focused and is a more focused and effective solution? Again, there is no test, test data supporting the need for the sewer system. Hawks Nest demanded testing to prove whether or not sewers are needed. Testing of the Garvin properties closer to Long Island Sound were done by the Garvins. And the late Sandy Garvin submitted the test results and an expert's conclusion to the WPCA. WPCA also conducted testing throughout the Hawk, throughout Hawks Nest for at least two years. Test re, the test result data was available on the town website. I reviewed it and saw no indication that there were problems that were causing pollution that required sewers. The WPCA never produced a report of the test result findings. I recall reading in their minutes that they were too busy with the sewer project to do a report at that time. It is safe to assume that if the test results supported the case for sewers in Hawks Nest, the report would have been produced. I have a copy of the Garvin test results and conclusions, should you wish to see it. The deep is demanding sewers without identifying a need or conclusive data to indicate that the Long Island Sound is being polluted by the beach area properties. Nor have they provided any data indicating there is pollution that would be reduced by sewers. Quite ironic when it is a fact that deep is the largest polluter of the Connecticut River and Long Island Sound because they release millions of gallons of partially treated sewerage, sewer treatment plants every year when heavy rain events result in the treatment plants exceeding capacity. This data is available and was reported by the Connecticut Examiner in late twenty twenty-four. WPCA requested nine point five million dollars for increased cost estimates in twenty nineteen, which was approved for borrowing in a referendum. Now they are requesting another seven point six million again for increased cost estimates. There's a certainty in my mind that if the referendum approves the seven point six million and the project commences, it will be back again for more millions to be able to complete the project. Now is the time to put a stop to this project that is based on no test data and no data indicating there is pollution in Long Island Sound that emanates from the beach properties. Address any septic system issues on an individual property basis, which most property owners are already doing if they have a problem. Respectfully, Stephen A. Ross, Old Line.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, and then we receive this just before our meeting to the Board of Selectmen regarding the Board of Selectmen meeting for August fourth, twenty twenty-five public comment from Frank Papalardo. As I am unable to be with you in person, please accept this letter and read it into the record. I am writing with great concern regarding the sewer cost and proposed town referendum. This project is one of the most expensive projects the town will undertake and will have years of cost and taxpayer ramifications. The proposed costs are far from firmly established. Miami Beach was rebid with the bid opening scheduled for August nineteenth, and Old Lime Shores has not yet gone out to bid. The shared infrastructure bids are currently in flux due to expiration of the original bids and offerings to the bidders to hold their bids with escalation clauses. These shared costs have a significant impact on the proportioned individual beach association and town cost. On an individual level, Soundview Area B has been designated to comprise twenty-nine point seven percent of the shared infrastructure cost in a proposed cost sharing agreement. Also known as the CSA. This percentage was presumably based on an engineering estimate of an annualized fifty thousand gallons per day usage of Soundview Area B. However, according to Connecticut Water Records, the actual usage for Soundview Area B is annualized at only ten thousand gallons per day. That's an eighty percent discrepancy. This is critical when establishing a CSA. How can there be any confidence in a CSA with such blatant discrepancies? Are there others? Another issue which has significant impact on costs specifically for Soundview Area B is the contractual connection fee cost for East Line and New London. According to the assigned proposed Soundview Area B twenty-nine point seven percent portion, the connection fee is approximately one point three million. The Old Line WPCA has gone on record that these contractual connection costs will not be viewed as capital cost and will be distributed as user fees. However, the state DEP, DEEP, sorry, has stated that these contractual connection fee costs are indeed capital costs and not user fees. Is the shifting of capital cost to user fees by the Old Line WPCA a sleight of hand to artificially reduce the capital cost and make the project look more affordable? Further unclear are the unknown costs and the CSA allocations East Line has proposed for their infrastructure improvements, which will be partially paid for by Old Line. Additional areas of concern with the suggested project cost are, as submitted by the Old Line WPCA, are a lack of transparency of what is included and not included, such as various easements for Amtrak and DOT and the cost of road and traffic safety examples for the police. A five percent contingency is included in the cost structure. However, it is likely, highly unlikely that any of these unknown costs would exceed the five percent. Typical contingencies are ten to twenty percent. Why only five percent on this project? The Old Line WPCA has continually used a cost calculation based on EDUs equivalent dwelling, dwelling units to show a modest cost. Unlike the surrounding beach associations where one house equals one EDU. Soundview Area B have a number of houses and properties that are considered more than one EDU. This again, once again, appears to be a conscious effort by the Old Line WPCA to skew the actual cost and drive a false affordability narrative. Continuing on page two, the Old Line WPCA has also stated that the usage rate would not exceed six hundred thousand per year. The EPA estimates that an average family uses four hundred gallons per day, which annualized is one hundred and forty thousand eight hundred gallons. The use flow rates per agreements with New London and East Line are seven dollars and ten cents per one thousand gallons. This cost equate, equals a cost of nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Not included in the nine hundred and ninety dollars of the maintenance fees and infrastructure upgrades. Once again, the numbers stated by the Old Line WPCA don't add up. When the Old Line WPCA chair is asked to further explain and define the cost estimates, members of the WPCA and the public are met with a cavalier and condescending attitude. The Old Line WPCA's position is that the entire cost of the project will be borne solely by the users in Soundview Area B. This is in direct conflict with state statutes regarding cost recovery for such projects and will likely result in legal action against the town and the Old Line WPCA. This project has a potential for exceeding the estimated cost, has not been properly vetted with the public using real costs, has lacked any sort of transparency, has been progressed, progressed with false and misleading information, and is likely to be legally challenged. The prudent approach for the Board of Selectmen is to demand a true and accurate accounting with all of the costs defined before moving this any further toward referendum. Respectfully submitted Frank Papalardo, thirty Swan Avenue.
You're interviewing, we're getting from.
Frank Papalardo, Swan Avenue. Okay, so we have read everything into record that was asked to be ready to record. And we have done, finished public comment, and we are moving on to old business. Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Have a good night.
Our next old business is the employee handbook. Which we've received drafts of, you read questions to answer, et cetera. And I would like to move that this be approved today, fine, with the final approval given by our legal labor attorney within the next two weeks, so that we can move this forward so that our employees have a new handbook to work with.
I have difficulty doing that because I received the answers when the meeting began, and it's been a long meeting, so, um, I'd like to at least have a day or two to take a look at this. I can email you my response.
Uh, I saw the, I had sent my comments last week and I saw the response to my comments and I'm satisfied with the response, so however you want to proceed is fine with me.
I received, Martha was kind enough to respond, and I received Jill's comments at the meeting tonight, so it's.
Okay.
I haven't had time, it's not many. I'm happy to send you my comments after I read it, if I can have a day or two.
Okay, how about this? Jim, I know that you sometimes appear in town. I would love a special meeting to get this moving so that I can get this to Pat Nakail and move this forward as quickly as possible. So if we give you till Wednesday to read, if we could find a time on Tuesday for a special short meeting just to go through and.
Tomorrow or? No, you said give me till Wednesday and then
Yeah.
Have the meeting on Tuesday.
Thursday.
Oh.
If we could do a meeting on Thursday.
I'm fine on Thursday.
Time on Thursday or Friday.
We can follow that's easier.
If possible, but you don't have to give it to me now.
Okay.
You can look at your calendar.
Either time up with me is fine, except it has to be before two thirty for me if it's Thursday.
Okay.
Okay, it can be virtual.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do a Tuesday.
Sounds great.
Special meeting. Okay, before two thirty Thursday, right, Jude?
Yes, please.
All right. We'll move on from that. Um, I can also send you the, I know I gave you the copy. Do you want it?
Yes, no, the copy's fine.
Okay. Uh, fireworks shuttle. Um, just for information only, whoever's here next year. For the fireworks shuttle, we had sixteen riders on a bus that, um, provided cost us about four hundred and twenty-five dollars for the evening. That was a cost of twenty-six dollars per ride. So I think that we need to seriously look if we're going to continue that. Now, next year will be America two fifty. It will be a big year. Um, and maybe we'd have more people, but I do think that we need to, um, consider that cost.
Can you repeat those numbers one more time?
Sixteen riders, and it cost us approximately four hundred and twenty-five dollars for the evening. They shuttle started at seven, and they picked up when the concert ended and brought them back to the big white parking lot.
Do we know the parking lot across from Lime Art Academy was at or near capacity?
I do not know if it was. It was, it seemed to be a much smaller crowd than there was the year before. Because I, when I walked across the field, I didn't feel like I was going to trip over anyone.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I would say that I don't know if the art academy opens it up. I mean, people certainly go in and park. Sometimes if the gates are open, they're, they're going to park.
Who's mentioned as an official parking?
Yeah, the, the police guided everyone into the middle school first. Um, there's a four hundred foot range that has to be cornered off, so that meant the parking lot for the staff could not be used. I'm not sure about by the tennis courts at the high school, but the middle school was used well. We emptied out and parking lot was empty within ten minutes, and everyone files out so orderly. It just.
So many people in the area have private parties as well because of viewing from local homes is great.
Yeah.
So I have.
The country club, you can see.
I've noticed a reduced, um, attendance via cars. I think we get the bigger.
It was also a damp night.
Right.
I can say that, and, and we'd had midsummer fast and people had been out all day and.
And a lot of people attend the Fourth of July events instead of the fireworks that night, that night. It's a long day. Plus or at the night before, as you say.
Well, I think anecdotally, everyone that I've talked to here in another towns, and we saw Memorial Day, we saw in Soundview on July fourth, attendance is down to all public events, period, which is.
People are doing a lot of family events and staying home. And staying off the ninety-five.
Okay.
It's worth considering, yes.
See where we are the next year. There's been, there have been suggestions made. Could we go forward and try to do something with another town, uh, to save cost, um, to put, you know, there's always still the people who want it totally to be, to be open. Um, we had an updated security meeting. Um, there are some particular things we could consider doing next year, which we can get into, uh, recommendations made by that security team of just the people that were all the presidents of the deer from beach associations that came. Um, and we can talk about that at another time. I don't think we need to discuss fireworks tonight. Um, so we move on to selectmen's general discussion. I know it's very late. You're all getting a blue ribbon for attendance and staying awake. Is there anyone who has any general discussion?
Very briefly, I've been, I had a conversation, email conversation with our Harvard master, Matt Lynch, and I thanked him for the work he's been doing on Monday when I was doing the film shoot. I saw him in the boat lane and saw him patrolling. And I mentioned to him, I think it's jet ski ordinance has worked extraordinarily well after a couple of weeks that were difficult for him.
Yep.
In enforcement. Um, but from our perspective, the swim lines being where they are, the moorings being where they are, the patrols in combination with the ordinance now in effect that we've had a very good year in terms of balancing all the interests, swimmers, boaters, and it appears to be working. And, uh, he agreed and, uh, thanked Matt Weber for enforcement and for giving out tickets. So it seems like for all the time we talk about problems, we're actually in a good place when we solve an issue. So, or we're, or a solution has worked so far, it seems.
So the only issue that I've heard that we have to continue to work on um, right now is a noise ordinance for those larger boats that come in from Long Island.
And even the jet skis that go past the local beaches.
With their music.
Well, that and the, um, cigarette boat rules.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So there are noise ordinance, we are, we have. It is hard to enforce because we would have to chase them.
Yep.
Um, but the boats that roar and play the music in to the beach is really upsetting to the people that live along Miami Beach and Soundview. I, I'm sure they, all the beaches.
Yes, they do.
So we really need to consider something to do for that. Um, at one time, when I was a select person, we talked about noise indicators.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and
A meter of some sort.
Um, the police at that time said they indicated they probably had one. They had one from long ago, but it would have to be calibrated. Afterwards, it was like we couldn't find some to calibrate that brand because it was so probably outdated. So there are others. I can tell you that the high school, I did talk to Ian, they actually have one that they've used because of people worried about sounds from games or band concerts, et cetera. So he said they do have one, but for the beach area, you have to get one that will muffle wind because of where it's going to be used. So we would have to, and they're not expensive. They're, they're relatively, they're less than five hundred dollars. So I, I mean, I know that sounds like an expense, but if it's for. So if we are to consider a noise ordinance, then we would have to start to think about that.
Don't we, don't we have a noise ordinance?
I thought we did, but.
But it, I don't think it specifies well enough for what we need for down at a beach area. So we should relook at that if you'd like to. Is there anything else?
Um, I'd like us to come up with a date and time to follow up on Tana Mahak landing. It's been a long time since we had our last, um, executive session meeting.
Okay, we can do another one of those. Anything else?
Like to use the ladies room.
I'll just tell you, Jude, I will do my best, but I have two weeks left to go to wedding too. And I'll try to my best.
Well, I'm happy to call Jack.
No, 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 I can call him. It's just, um, getting me fitting it in and making sure.
No, that's, it can be after that. I just don't want.
No, I'll have it on the books.
It to be Labor Day.
Uh, I keep flipping to September all day long today.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, second.
That will be at eight-twenty-five.